Yep.
So downtown.
Yeah.
Just do it at the beginning.
It's all shut off, which I don't really, I guess I don't need it. So I'm on the call.
I don't think Tom's gonna, I think I heard Tom.
I heard, I saw.
I don't think he's gonna be here.
So I'm getting called to order our regularly scheduled meeting on today's Thursday, November seventeenth. And yeah, it's a nice snowy night and we have nice snacks in here tonight.
Good.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
See what you're missing, Roger?
Yeah, Roger had to be on.
We're missing snacks.
Yes. It's terrible, we're missing the snacks.
Yeah. We need the snacks right about now.
All right, so first thing is to set an adjust agenda and I have a question. And that is, oh, nevermind. You already did it. I was gonna ask to swap the last two items, but it's already swapped. Oh, no, I still wanna swap those, I think.
Seventeen.
Yeah.
Right?
Like, because I think that we're gonna, with the budget, aren't we gonna go through highway tonight? I think it might be, I don't know, we already looked at those folks.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I'd rather swap those and like, let's, let's do the budget first.
See the budgets.
Okay?
Sure.
Knowing that we have that.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. Anything else?
I just needed to correct, on item two, it's not the downtown commission, but the, the organization name is Hardwick Downtown Partnership.
Hardwick Downtown.
Partnership.
Partnership. R D. Any other changes, adjustments? Uh, so could I have a motion to, uh?
I move to accept the amendment.
Second.
Any discussion? All, David, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, any votes? I'm carrying, so we'll, we'll do that. Um, first is, let's order your approved minutes from last time, which was November the third.
And I apologize, they're missing from your packet.
Oh.
I can put them up on the screen if you want. Um, I had sent them, I mean, I sent them all out before.
We all got our own.
So, but I apologize, they got left out.
Just give us a task and see if we've got them.
But I did send them out the Monday after, so cheated.
I'm pretty sure she knows who read them and who didn't. Didn't fool the teacher too.
I was gonna say, we should talk about what is in there, what Danny said, but if, if he's good with what's in there.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're good, great.
I'm standing, I wasn't there, so.
Okay, my mom favorite, all of them here. Please say that approval of minutes has written, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, aye.
Aye.
Aye, and an abstention. All right, so most of the minutes are approved. Um, next is town manager's report given by David Robson Jr., who is here.
All right, um, the new, just an update on the wastewater plant project, the new liner to the lagoon has been installed. Um, the subcontractors, subcontractors still need to install additional piping, uh, in some of the, in some of the areas around where the liner and the piping go through. Um, once the lagoon has three feet of, once they do that, we can start filling, filling the lagoon. Um, once the lagoon has three feet of liquid in, they can fill, they can backfill the keyway in place, holding in the liner around the whole, um, around the whole lagoon.
There are keyways.
Where the, the liner comes up.
Stretching, so yeah, there's a keyway that holds the top.
Yeah, so it's, everything's going.
Keyways at the top.
Yeah, around the whole thing. That's where the liner goes into the ground and is anchored by your fur.
And they can still do it with the weather, I guess?
Oh, yeah, yep. Um, all in all, the project, project is going well and is on schedule.
On budget?
Um, for the most part, yeah. I mean, we still have, we're a little less than halfway through the project, I would say. So, we haven't, we haven't spent the, we have money left over. We're less than halfway through.
How far, how far should I push you?
Um, not too far. Please. Um, I, I did say we were, we were way under, or we were under budget, or you tried to get that out of me for the slugs stuff.
Well, you said that you were under budget and that I asked if that project forward to the whole project.
Yeah.
You, you danced on that.
Yeah, I've been always dance. Um, the town of Hardwick has purchased four mobile homes at the last tax sale. Um, the owners have a year to redeem their back taxes and in some cases sewer and water delinquencies. So let's hope they redeem.
Yeah.
Um, the bridge survey is still available on the town's website and will wrap up on Monday, the twenty first. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the survey. As of November eleventh, we have received close to seventy responses. To put it in context, the twenty, twenty-one bridge survey had a total of a hundred and three responses. Um, Tracy Martin presented the community recovery and revitalization program, the C R R P grant funded through the A C C D. Um, this grant opportunity could potentially fund water and wastewater proj, it's eligible to fund water and wastewater projects. There's a total of forty million available in this program and I would like to apply for approximately seven hundred and twelve thousand to fund the add alternates for the wastewater plant project. Uh, there's a twenty percent match and we may be able to use our sewer capital funds that we already committed to the project for the match. So this is a new program, so this could help us out.
Great.
Um, so Tracy's looking and we had a meeting, uh, we talked about strategy and Tracy's continuing to investigate the program.
And that's state level?
Yeah, it's, it's, they're federal, federal.
Federal money, but the application through the state.
Through the state.
Through the state.
The, um.
Great.
A C C D and community.
Agency commerce community.
Commerce and community, yep. So that's good, that was.
There's plenty of people.
That was like a, a bright.
Seem to have a net worth of money.
That was it, that was a bright spot.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Um, in this grant, uh, this program is available to nonprofits as well.
Uh, so we're eating.
He's tired of it.
Any nonprofit.
Right, is that, he's tired of the nonprofit? Their boss is tired of it?
Tired of it.
But, yeah.
Boss even visible for.
Yeah, um, but it's, uh, there's a forty million in the pot and it's, it's really for, um, the, the COVID relief, but also for further infrastructure improvements. Also childcare isn't in.
This is forty million for Vermont.
Yeah, yeah.
Will they accept, you say twenty percent match, will they accept any fine for that?
I, I don't know the answer to that question.
Well, it wouldn't matter if we could use.
Well, we've already used five hundred thousand of our costs, so that could have counted towards the match.
So we just use it again, yeah?
But we didn't, we don't know the answer to that yet.
No, but that's, ideally, that's what we.
Right, um, there's another thing, oh, childcare centers too is another one.
With an emphasis on housing, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So do you need it from us or?
Not right now, but just, it's, it's a stay tuned, it's a, you know.
That'd be fantastic if we could get the add alternates back in there and get them funded.
Yep.
Yep.
And, um, two of the points of the program are, uh, already planned projects are attractive. And then, um, the other one was, I don't know, I lost my train of thought there for a second, you chew me off.
Just for the, for the sake of people who haven't been following the conversations, the add alternates were things that we wanted to do at the sewer plant, but we couldn't afford and they weren't critical and so we dropped them off.
Right, yeah. And such as the grid collection system.
Yeah.
Um, part of pretreatment.
Big screen TV.
No, there was no big screen TVs on that.
From those Zoom calls, dude.
No.
They can't hit Zoom calls.
Nope.
Massage.
Keep going.
Yeah, okay. Um, we received our second opioid settlement payment of two thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. Today, we have received close to fifty-four hundred dollars. I would like to use some of these funds to paint the senior community center and possibly pay for a dedicated fiber connection there with those funds. Um, the opioid settlement was all about, um, you know, how it affected communities. And, um, I think that we're gonna use that space for community involvement, so I think that's a good way to use those funds.
And have we, are you, when you asked that, are you talking about the twenty-seven hundred or the full fifty-four?
Well, I'm hoping it's.
I'll tell you, I'll be the one who's on the phone.
I think that we're gonna have some high school kids, uh, do the painting, so it's really just to purchase the paint. And then the, I did get a quote for a dedicated fiber, uh, internet connection there. And it's about a hundred dollars a month.
That's it.
Yeah.
And do we already have that in the PD budget, the, that connection? So if we paid for it.
We have a dedicated fiber line for the PD.
It has to be separate though, right?
Well, I'd like it to be separate because the PD has a managed router by DPS and it's, it's not a good practice to have everybody on there.
No.
No, not at all.
I don't buy it.
I just wasn't sure if the connection could be.
It will be.
Do we need that?
It'll be a dedicated line.
Do we need that for? I don't, maybe I don't understand what the dedicated, what we're trying to.
So if, if, say at a retreat, if we wanted to get on the wifi, we would have, we use the PD wifi, but if there was a separate line.
So basically, there's no wifi.
No, it's.
Not for public use. It's not.
Well, I understand theirs, but.
Yeah.
So basically, we need cable.
No, fiber.
Fiber.
Fiber and cable are two different things.
But they're equivalent.
Right, yeah.
In this discussion.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Um, so, and another scenario in which that might get used is if there were high school students there doing schoolwork or something, right? Wouldn't, wouldn't that get used for that?
It's being used for that right now.
Right, so that's a really good use.
I don't, I don't, no, I just pay six dollars and thirty-nine cents a gallon of diesel, so.
Yeah.
I'm just.
Well, stay tuned, Danny.
Yeah, wait till we get to the budget. You're not the only one.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, I think we should have it in there. I would like that, that, I want that rural community space to be used more, so.
Right.
I think it is.
In just about every angle of it, I'm sure the red committee, I know these people, I'm sure they want like.
Virtual meetings.
Yep.
Virtual meetings.
That, you know, you, you had mentioned VAST wants to have a meeting there.
Yes.
So do you wanna have a, do you wanna?
So is that something, should that be budgeted in the building?
Right now?
Just so you don't have to deal with it every year, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
It's part of the building nowadays, you gotta have that in the longer space.
And I'm hoping that, I don't know how long the opioid settlement money is coming in, but.
Yeah, we were trying to look that up today and I couldn't put my finger on it.
Well, certainly, we can use some of that now, huh?
Do we need a motion?
No, but what I'm, what I'm saying is, it would be nice to be able to pay for the internet and improvements to that building with that opioid settlement money.
Seems like a good use.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you need a motion or can we just say do it?
The board generally agrees?
I think I was just gonna do it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea.
If we can do it, five thousand.
Right, yeah, okay. Put a big check mark on that one.
All right, good.
Good job.
I have a couple of quick questions.
Yep.
Okay, um, the, just going back to the bridge survey, is there, I wasn't able to go, unfortunately, go to, um, the, to the open house. I was just wondering if you could just do a really quick update for folks who maybe weren't able to go and so what's next in that process after the survey?
So, um, after they compile the, the results of the survey, um, I think we're gonna go ahead and, and move towards the bridge that the community chose. And then we have to get, um, sorry, with the, the next process is the design, putting the bridge in place, the design of it, and then permitting. And then we need to go and look for a contractor.
So it's not, it's not coming to the select board to be voted on, it's just being voted on by the community?
It's the public input piece of the project, yep.
So.
We vote when it gets to money.
Oh, yeah, we have to.
Approve or, yeah, say approve.
I'll wait to, wait to find out from S E group. I'll meet with them at the beginning of next week. With the next steps.
Awesome. And then my only other question about that was about the community recovery program, um, which sounds perfect, like, the perfect project because we already have funding for it, it's already moving. I know the state loves to fund projects that'll be completed.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if there's any room to think about, and it doesn't have to be in this grant, but in future, potential future recovery grants or opportunities, that conversation we had about fixing some of our water lines and how that also ties into the septic project, I don't know if that's a future.
We talked about the water main.
Yeah.
For this. Um, and we kind of, we went out, we were like, this would be perfect. Originally Tracy came with this plan for the water line. And we don't even have the water line, we, we don't have it engineered, we don't have it, you know, so we talked about a small municipal funding grant to pay an engineer to be able to, to do that. And then we could look for these funds, once we have that project, um, kind of shovel ready.
Yeah, sounds great.
But yeah, we did talk about that. That is on the, the board priorities.
It's on the whiteboard downstairs.
I think it is, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, good.
That's, I'm glad you brought that up, yeah.
Great.
I'm done.
You're done? All right, next up is road foreman report, I can give that, he's out plowing.
Yeah.
I know that they got a, um, grant aid project done on Bunker Hill Road.
Oh, wow, good.
Uh, it's a last, you know, the last week and, uh, then they've just been preparing for winter and get plows ready, getting equipment going. And they hit it hard, uh, last couple nights and mornings.
Good. Uh, next up is the Hardwick Police Department report and we have Mike Henry here.
So, uh, we got our new Explorer, oh, it's out on the road, uh, finally got everything, all the equipment on it. So the other vehicle stripped and it's four seven, so we're gonna be listing that.
If somebody's watching and wants to buy a car, would they call you or what do they do?
Somebody's watching it, slightly used. They can re, slightly used, but we're gonna give it away at a great deal.
But not abused.
But not abused.
Did they contact you?
Contact Hardwick Police.
Hardwick Police.
We're gonna put it on the, uh, Facebook market, marketplace, yeah.
Sedan.
All wheel drive, so makes somebody a good rig. It'll save you on diesel.
It's, yeah, it saves you on diesel.
You know, it won't be six dollars and thirty-nine cents a gallon, so.
It's a very safe first driver.
Oh, there you go.
Henry looking?
No.
So, uh, Steve Mitchell has completed the TASER instructor course, uh, which means that we will have in-house TASER instructor. We'll get that done before the end of the calendar year.
You mean, get, get that done, mean get everybody trained?
Get everybody, every year you have to be certified in it.
Oh, every year?
Every year.
Okay.
And this year, we've been a little behind, not having somebody, we've been working with Morris Town Police Department, they helped us out a lot with our firearms and everything else that we needed. So we're just trying to get ourselves a little bit more self-sufficient. So, but Mitchell's gonna be out for the next couple of weeks on sick leave, um, but once he gets back, we'll get the course up and get it done. Uh, we sent Chad, Bill and George to a A-Ride course, uh, which that's for drug detection of, uh, you know, a pair of drivers with drugs on the roadway. So that now has everybody, this year, we've gotten everybody certified in that, so hopefully we can take a few more off the road that are out there. Um. Going back to the, uh, I just wanna say a big thanks to the Hazen staff. They've really been working hard with a lot of students who have just abused them and just don't wanna be in school, but, uh, they've worked things out. And right now, we have four high school students using the community center and one middle school student using the community center. So they're bringing staff over, working with these kids and actually, it's working out pretty good, keeping them off campus. Um, some of the high schoolers that were going there, were basically going there to sell apes and drugs and then leave. And no, we don't have that, we don't have them on campus, so, uh, but, uh, I think it's making a difference, so. That space is getting utilized quite a bit now.
Good.
It's good. That's all I have for right now.
I, yeah, any questions, but we'll talk some kind of, just I think that's very interesting if it's working.
Yeah.
It's pretty solid.
Short, short term, seems to be working.
That's what I was saying.
It's, it's.
It's tree hot.
Yeah, it's tree hot. It really is, uh, but.
I don't know what, that's much experience, what are we gonna do about it?
No, but if they have a, have a way to, to help folks who are struggling and kind of get them, steer them back on track a little bit, I think that's awesome.
Yeah, we can just keep them engaged and keep them from.
I think the big advantage is not, not disruption, not the disruptions that are not occurring at Hazen.
For.
For the students that wanna learn and wanna be there, that, that's the real, it's great that we hopefully can help one or two people, but it's really better that we're helping everyone that's at Hazen that doesn't have to deal with this, these disruptions.
It's also preventing our PD from outrun over there.
Right.
Yeah.
No, it's great if it, yeah, that's good.
I just wanted to say, Mike, too, that I've been seeing a lot of patrol in East Hardwick and a bunch of people have commented on how nice it is to have a presence at East Hardwick and not just downtown, but also on the side roads too. I think the, the community is feeling really good about having that presence, so thanks for doing that.
Absolutely, I've seen them everywhere where they go, everywhere.
Or you thought you were safe.
What are you gonna do to them?
You keep glancing down.
Mostly back though.
Yeah.
Lots happening back there, so. They got the word, that's where I hang out, I guess.
What's, yeah, I was gonna say, what's weird is they, they're there where you are.
Have you got the parking ticket, Dave?
No.
Oh, boy.
All right.
Thanks for reminding me, I thought I skipped.
Thank you, Mike.
Yep.
All right, uh, next up, we have a Hardwick Electric Department report and we have Roger here on the, on the Zoom, I almost said on the phone, but on the Zoom.
Great, thank you. So I got, uh, I wanna do a sound check, can you hear me, is that working?
Yeah, he can hear you well.
Great, great, so I apologize, I was, well, I get, I'm getting, covering this, and I came back from some travel and told Casey I'd be there in person and then being a good citizen, I gave myself a COVID test right before the meeting. And I came back positive, so I figured, I just put my heart go on to do a bite soon.
And we thank you, we thank you for that.
I'll feel that back again.
Dodged a bullet.
I think so tomorrow. So, um, from Hardwick Electric, um, the, I think I have here several points, maybe eight different ones that I'll update, but these may trigger thoughts you may have from earlier presentations or earlier updates, so feel free to either interrupt me on these points or circle them if you have a question. I'll do my best to answer, but I'm pretending to be the general manager of Hardwick Electric and career expert. Uh, the commissioner has been doing that for a few years, but, you know, still, still a learning curve. So, uh, the, the first thing I'll forward on is that, uh, we've been, and this is consistent with what you've heard, we have been with our expert cost of purchased electricity. Uh, we have been, uh, depleting our cash reserve at, at the rate of a thousand, fifty thousand dollars a month. And that's been, you know, up and down a little bit through the year, but it's been a consistent reduction in cash. So, as you may remember, the cash costs became from the final settlement on the years ago investment. And so then our cash reserves up and then this year, we've been forestalling the rate increase despite the increase in the purchased electricity by depleting that. And so that's why, as you heard last time, we are working toward a rate increase, which is a very formal process. We don't do it on our own, we have to go to the commission and make a case and they will acquire a test and then either approve or disapprove. But, uh, that is coming and that's the, the basic reason is that the purchase power costs simply are, are higher and, and the rates have to go up to accommodate that. If there are any questions on that, I'll go to a new project, you'll find interesting. The new project is, uh, we are in the early stages of exploring battery storage to shave peaks from our system. And as you know, uh, when there's a peak period, uh, we are assessed a, a demand charge that drives up our total capacity. So if we can offset our peak demand at the magical moments, not an easy thing, we have to be able to find that moment when it's going to be the peak, uh, we can save a lot of money. There is technology now that allows peak shaping and it's largely a, a large battery storage system. Think of a, think of a, a large shipping container or two lined up in a prepared site at the right place on our grid. And when we get to that peak time of demand, it, it discharges its power storage into the, the grid, so the meat will then go out and, and buy, uh, and trigger those demand charges. So it'll take quite some more work for getting proposals and, uh, it looks like it's going to be a very attractive thing. And also, I think people are asking, you know, even though we're certainly not, you know, bringing back up the power with all resources, even at this level of municipality utiliting, we can do some of these innovative things. So, uh, that's an update on that project, any questions there? So that's called battery backup, repeat shaving. The, uh, we'll, we'll soon be making some decisions about automated metering. And it's called automated metering infrastructure. You know one thing that's true about utilities is acronyms? So remember this A O I acronym, acronym, because it'll be around a lot. Um, and basically, it's where the more advanced largest utilities have gone a long time ago, where instead of having meter readers crapping around to everybody, it's sort of, you know, there's a feedback, electronic digital feedback. And that feedback, uh, is not just available automatically.
Uh-oh.
It can be available daily through time. So that, that is both a sort of savings for metering, but it also then allows us to consider over time either time of use rates, that is charging more in certain times of the day when the power costs more, or, uh, it, it helps with the sort of reconnect, disconnect services for crews have to go out today and do that. And it also helps on outage management, because all of us, when there's an outage, you know, have to dial that number and report it. This system is an automatic report. Uh, and it also paints a picture of where the outage is concentrated and lots of crews just to get to the source of the problem and not wait for people to self-report. So, um, that's a key project, EPSA, which you know, unifies the thirteen municipal utilities, is the, has the lead on that. And we're gonna need, if not all, the thirteen, you know, the majority of the thirteen sign off on it before we can go forward, because it requires that kind of scale. We couldn't really do it on our own, we have to do it under the EPSA charter. So that'll come along in future updates, we should ask if it's known, the agenda, because that'll be one of our projects over the next couple of years along with hopefully the, the peak shaving battery storage. The other things on here are more like updates. You remember the old Debbie Farm, which is a lawsuit, which is now called the Richardson lawsuit, where there was some stray voltage and, uh, and Hardwick Electric, we believe incorrectly, was attributed as the source of that and we're therefore in litigation. And that's basically the stage of technical information being produced and provided. And the attorneys on both sides coming up to speed. We do, again, we do feel their position is extremely strong on this, but it is, you know, the, the rule of the court system, so nothing's a certainty. So we'll get future updates on that. The, um, Wolkett Hydro, which is one of the things they all of us are pretty proud of, that we have our own generating capacity, this has been a dry year for all of northeastern hydro. So we're behind, if you think of it normal year for us, it would be two point seven million kilowatt hours. Uh, for year to date at this point, that's certainly be two point seven, we're really at two point four now. And that's, uh, that's too bad, because of course, there's just zero incremental cost to those kilowatt. You know, we, we have to spend a lot of money to keep the hydro running and to keep it in good shape. We invest, but when it's running, there's more water, more electricity, there's no incremental charge for those, for that. So water matters, so celebrate water coming into the loyal training. But the other project that we have that's doer than that is that H eleven solar project that we did, that Hardwick Electric did with, with an investor. And that one has generated one point nine million kilowatt hours so far this year. And I know those are sort of abstract numbers, but put it this way, if you measure against the Wolkett, it's very meaningful, you know, it's a, it's a huge now part. The two of them together are, are on track to be about sixteen percent of our, our, our energy needs. Uh, so that's, that's pretty exciting.
Hey, Roger.
Yeah?
Um, I just had a question about the, um, you said Wolkett generation is down because the water has been low. I just had a question about the, you said Wolket generation is down because the water has been low. Is there any correlation between that reduced generation and your increased purchasing of electricity?
Oh, absolutely. It's not huge, because if you just measure that between what we've had, 2.4 versus 2.7 in a so-called average year.
Yeah.
That difference is what we had to then go buy and we had to pay a lot for. So yeah, coming up to your thoughts, no question. Now, on the bottom of the floor, I make that as just a blanket negative. The truth of the matter is, the other correlate to less water is more sun.
Absolutely.
Right.
So if you, and many of you have solar panels, you probably noticed when you were little, that it's been a pretty good year. We had some really good months on solar generation. So there is a little bit of offset in there.
Okay, that makes sense.
Not, not from here on, the next few months are not going to be still with us. So then, I'll move on to the end. The, the, the basic numbers for our most recent month and year to date, now this September, there is a lag for all, all the information comes into us from EPSA. Yes, that we're over budget on purchased power, we've topped $200,000. Right now, it's about 163,000 through September, probably tracking through the year, the over by about 220,000. And that, the, the real cause of that is this whole global natural gas issue and the whole dueling with power party driving that. And the year-to-date basic numbers, we try to give this year every time we report. The September year-to-date revenues are just a little bit under budget, 1.5% or 69,000. So that's not a big, that's not a big revenue miss. The expenses are however, 6% over budget, or 308,000 to date. So, and that's basically mostly the increased cost of purchased power. And then you probably remember these RECs that are being used to promote renewable energy trade. And their value is set on the outside market. The RECs are actually being bid up, interestingly, by large corporate buyers. And when I say large corporate buyers, I mean like the big brand names that we all purchase, big global corporations, in order to fulfill their climate change commitments, they're buying up RECs. So the RECs basically just cost more. And that's been about a $40,000 increase. So those are the two, we've, the cost of energy and the cost of RECs. And that's it, that's my wrap up. So any questions on this or anything else that's been covered recently?
I just have a really quick question, Roger, or just kind of a recap. So it sounds like to meet the expenses, there's going to be a rate increase. There's a talk about the battery options. And then my other question, so you, I know you just finished the H11 project. But is there thought about another energy, another project like that in the future for Hardwick Electric?
It's not on our drawing board right now, just because relative to the size of our staff, our plate's pretty full. It's in fact very full, through the detail around the increases to build a big project.
Yeah.
And then these other ones. So the answer to your question is, there's nothing that's coming along for, for next year. But I'd be amazed if there are, you know, there are opportunities, especially as technology continues to improve. You know, it's also, I think you can follow the news, you know, our timing, we were just fact that lucky, you know, when we pulled the trigger on that project. Costs had to get skyrocketed and then with the whole global supply chain issue, had we been implementing it a year or two later.
Right.
Into those costs, it would have cost more, so, and the benefit of costs. So hopefully there'll be future times when we can do more.
Great, and then just, this is just a, something that I, you probably don't have control over, but it'd be great to share back. There's so much information that's given during the department reports, which is amazing. It would be really helpful, if possible, to get something bulleted in our, in our board folders. So we can think about it a little bit before, like, maybe we used to get, we used to get, when I first started, like a pretty simple.
Yeah, what I suggest, here's my suggestion after several years of, of the board. The, you know, Mike Sullivan, as general manager of the report, is typically one page. And it's very dense and it covers, you know, sort of all the important things for it. And I think he's done, he's done, makes a very big writer, he's got it all there on page. So if you're not reading that, start to there. And then in the stack, yeah, it's pretty dense. And I, there are a few pages that we could tackle on, like the, you know, the financial report to, to improve the financial summary slides. But even those, you kind of have to, you know, they're, they're a little bit odd in terms of the bottom line isn't really the bottom line. You have to add this back, you know, we need things like utilities. So they're not totally, so that's what I do.
This is every Joe Blow can understand this stuff.
So I wonder if it's possible to have the some, the manager's summary report. You're talking about the manager's summary for your, for the board of commissioners meetings, right?
Yes.
So I wonder if it's possible for us to, I mean, I know, like, how do we get those?
I can't, as you know, I can't make any commitments individually. I can only make a commitment as, as a whole board of commissioners.
Yeah.
But that's a public, I believe that's public, and so I believe.
Yeah.
But I, I can't on first thought think of why we can't, but I can't make that commitment without the board.
Yeah, like even if there's a lag, even if we don't get it until like the meet, the select board meeting following the HED meeting, that would still be helpful, I think.
Is that?
Yeah.
Posted with, I mean.
Yeah, it must be with the minutes, right?
Your website does a good job.
The answer is yes, but the issue is lag. And we would have worked out great, our website would be better at posting and all that. But Eric's request, in a perfect world, we wouldn't need to provide it to you, because you could just pull up right over there and see it real time.
Just put it in.
Right.
We'll have to make sure that, if that's possible, if we're really interacting together doing that flipping, then I'd like security to be there.
Yeah, but.
But I'm not sure we're up to that standard yet.
No, and, and it might work better for us if it's a push rather than a pull, right?
Yeah, because, because you'll, yeah, I have, yeah, a lot of things I'd like to get.
Right.
Because it forces you to either read it or deliberately say I'm talking to you.
Right, and then it's on you, because he didn't.
I'll have to go back for it.
Right, right.
So I will, my takeaway, we have a meeting Monday night, and when I go to the Monday night meeting, I'll bring this up and circle back to you.
So I just have one other question, sorry I'm dragging this on, but, so back to the rate case. And you, I think you maybe alluded to this when you said that, that there's a lot of staff time dedicated to working through that. So I'm just imagining that, that getting that rate case together is relooking at all the rate structure. Is that the case, is that true? Like including?
Well, it could be.
Okay.
It, it could be, but that's a much bigger task.
Because I, I remember.
That is a, that's a much bigger review and a much bigger task. I think we could always do that separately, sort of, you know, the rate increase we're looking for is to increase the total revenue, to meet the total expenses.
Yeah.
There's a separate change in rate structure where you may not, you may not change the total revenue impact, which is how it's generated, you know, who's paying what.
Yeah.
And as you might have watched, Hardwick did some work with that recently. And that's a separate, it's a very similar process, but it can, it's separate. I can assure you, our, our ongoing view of this increase is not to bite that off, because.
Okay.
It's a much bigger problem.
So, so it'd be.
And I think we talked about it, if we do it, I think we need a very broad community input for it. Because it really is a transfer of burden.
Yeah.
We have to, we have to be very careful to have everybody's input. Because the total revenue has got to stay the same, that's who, who's going to add more and who's going to lose the burden.
Okay. All right, that makes sense. Thank you.
So I think that'll be very healthy at some point, that it's a big project for all of us, and it's a community-wide project.
And so that's not what's happening right now. So right now is just looking to increase rates to balance.
Not, not at the moment, unless there's some input or dial or, you know, until it's over, it's not over.
Yeah.
In a process, and it could go anywhere, but we're not trying to steer it there, because we recognize you need a lot of input.
Okay, sounds good. All right, any other questions for Roger? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Roger.
Thanks, everybody.
All right. So just because Tom walked in, I'll circle back. Do you want to report anything? We already gave you a report that you were proud of. Are you good to go?
Good to go.
All right. So next up is item one, select board discussed potential sale of property that was acquired at a tax sale on, somewhere on Caspian Avenue.
I say we go with option one.
Yeah, I think option one is.
Peter done.
Option, I, I want.
Try him.
Do you want a backstory?
Your, your information that you sent email.
Oh, that option from the DLCT. Yeah, but I know you've been working on this.
Right.
For quite a while, this property.
Yeah.
Yeah, but this is just telling us how with the ways that we can distract the project.
You have a, there's a path to move forward to sell it, is this what?
Yeah, I mean, do you want the history or?
I just want to know what you propose to move forward.
So we, we got an offer.
Okay.
And we can discuss the offer and put out the notice and sell the property with the.
Okay.
You know, with the caveat that it's going to get cleaned up.
And do you feel that the offer is acceptable?
I met with the Mercers and we discussed what needed to happen with the property. They had been asking me to clean up the property. And I was on the verge of cleaning up the property. And they said that they would take on the cleanup of the property. So they offered, I think we can discuss the amount.
Yeah, says you can.
Yeah. They offered 15,000. If the appraised value is 18,000, and they would assume the cleanup costs.
And, and what's owed on it is under, you know, the, the tax lien is.
Is.
Under.
Five thousand.
So it'd be covered.
Yeah.
And so, and they would commit, we'd have some sort of written commitment that it would get cleaned up?
Yeah, says you can, right here, we can do that too.
That would be a.
I suppose.
But our bid for.
It wouldn't be contingent on the sale.
Right.
But we could.
Well, I suppose we have a junk ordinance anyway, so.
Well, it says right here, you can.
We do, we don't need to.
In here, you just post everything, including what prominent transactional terms.
Yeah.
Which to me is clean it up.
Needs to be cleaned up.
Yeah, and they know that, because they didn't ask you me to clean it up.
That's what I'm saying, then.
So then, okay, so.
The way the property was, the state of the property, the financial state of the property, it wouldn't, wouldn't have gotten cleaned up.
Right.
Unless we did it.
Yeah.
Or a new property.
So right now, we need to make a motion, right?
To set the ball in motion to.
Make a motion to.
Accept the offer?
Yeah, I'm just reading that, the fancy wording.
Well, how do we make sure that it's cleaned up to the, I mean, we got a bid for the cleanup, the way that the town wants to see it get cleaned up. How do we ensure that that happens?
Well, it's, the whole reason, the people that wanted to get it cleaned up were the Mercers, so.
Well, everybody on that, in that area.
Yeah, but I mean, there, I, I don't know how you're going to do that. But I, I don't feel as though that, I don't think we, I don't think I personally feel comfortable putting a lot of pressure on them to clean it up. I'd take their word on it myself. He put something in writing, but I don't think it has to be a big deal, not the cleanup. I think the intent is to clean it up. And we should appreciate the fact that someone else is going to do it other than the taxpayers of the town. I like that idea. So I don't mind putting it in there, but I don't think it needs to be a big contractual thing to clean it up in a certain way, in my opinion.
I don't know if you could enforce that, if you, like, it wouldn't be contingent on the sale, because we have to sell it to them before they were.
Right, so, and I don't, again, I think this is, we got to treat people.
Yeah. I agree with Danny, and we also have, we do technically have an ordinance, so we can support them.
If you don't do it right, I'll go up and arm wrestle you. Whatever, no, I understand, but I don't.
No, if it just didn't get cleaned up, then we do have a junk ordinance that.
Right, then he's the new landowner who's going to deal with it.
Right.
And we ain't going to be, I ain't going to be, we might go there and talk to him, though.
Hey, but, but.
I think it'd be great if you, if we put something somewhere, but I don't think it's a big deal.
But given that they, their motivation is to see it cleaned up anyway.
Yeah, I don't think it's a risk.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
So we need a motion to sell it and post it?
You could say to accept the offer, subject to the statutory requirements of the sale.
I said that very well.
So ba- basically you did.
Already got that, aye. I moved that we do that.
I second Danny's motion.
Toby.
So we would move forward with the sale and we'd need to, we'd need to notify the public for 30 days.
Yeah.
They can't get a mortgage for the property, because for a year, they wouldn't be able to get a mortgage. So it's contingent on a cash sale. And then after the 30 days, no one objects.
5%, not no one. 5% of the population.
Yeah, we have a form, we have a template for that, as a formal notice that we'll have to post in our paper.
Right, but you know what I'm saying, so I just don't take it lightly.
Yeah.
A bunch of people are going to have to be against it.
Yeah.
Not just the one neighbor.
Yeah, but it seems like the neighbors are going to be in favor of having some new owner who's going to clean it up.
I think, I think all in all, it's a good situation.
Yeah.
There's several other properties in town that could use the same program. If someone's willing, unfortunately.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a snowball effect.
But on a different subject, all this talk about housing.
Yeah.
There's a lot of lots in the village that could use new housing.
Yeah.
Existing lots.
Existing structures that are inhabited, is what you're saying?
That are, they're not inhabited now, and maybe the structure would have to be tearing down by a similar structure in size.
Yeah.
Village housing.
Yeah.
Is, there's a lot of village lots, individual lots.
I agree.
Available in Hardwick. So I've been really putting a lot of effort in this housing thing.
Good.
A lot of heavy thinking.
So we have a motion.
Anyway.
We have a motion in a second to accept the offer and get this process started. So any more discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All right.
Any opposed, motion carries, thank you for shepherding this process through.
I just have a really quick tax sale question. I'm wondering if we've seen, it seems like with also what we just heard in your report, and maybe I'm wrong, that we are acquiring more properties via tax sale this year? But maybe that's not true. The town, the town is, I'm just wondering if it seems if.
Well, these are, this is just a start of it.
These are, these are landless properties.
Right, and it started a year long, so it's not.
Still have a year to buy that.
We don't have to hold it deep.
And actually, Kaylee, the sale we just had yesterday is probably the lowest dollar amount we've had in several, in a few years.
For the one that we was just reporting on?
Like, I mean, we hope to recoup all of it, but it was just over 3,000, which is low.
I was just curious if there was more.
Last fall, it was like 9,000, so, yeah.
Because of the VHA program, people are able to.
Yeah, great.
Get assistance to pay their taxes.
Which is great.
But this was just the first time, right? So they still have the year.
Yeah.
So we don't actually need any more trailers.
Right. All right. Next is item two, select board to consider appointed, appointing David Upson Jr. as the town staff liaison and Sherry Cornish as the select board liaison for the Hardwick Downtown Partnership, which is a new, yet to be formed nonprofit, right?
So.
Let's do that.
So we approved the bylaws of this organization, and so this is just part of the laws.
Yep.
I move that we appoint David and Sherry to these very prestigious positions.
Second.
In the community.
All right, any more discussion?
With full authority to ring.
All, all in favor, please say aye.
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 You didn't want it.
Okay, any opposed? That was everybody, so motion carries. Thank you. Next, item three, select board to consider a new road name, Earl, am I pronouncing that correctly?
Yuril.
Yuril.
Yuril, like the Yuril Mountains in Russia.
Yuril.
Oh, Yuril Gil Krybik.
It is east Hardwick, after all.
And this is something that the.
Where is it?
Not, I don't know.
Why does it look familiar?
It's a mountain. It separates.
Because he said there's a big mountain range in Russia.
I've been there.
Well, I haven't been there either, but, so this is one of those things where the. So, this is one of those things where the property owners have agreed, they have to do it because we have to do something because of nine-one-one.
Right, and there's three driveways now, and, yeah.
I make a motion that we name this new road.
Second. Tom, do you have to plow this road now?
No, it's private.
This is private.
Wait, so we had a motion in a second?
Second, yeah.
So, and did you see that the description does say where it is?
Well, we respond to it.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Next is item four. Select board to consider appointing Kathy Hemmons to the Hardwick Conservation Commission for a three-year term with 2.5 years remaining. So, it's expiring May thirty-first in 2025.
I move that we do that.
Second.
Let's give it to Sherry.
Any discussion? I think we all know Kathy pretty well from her years of service on this board. All right, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kathy, for stepping up despite your disapproval of my dress the other day. Very glad to have you. Conservation Commission.
That leaves us wondering, Eric.
Next is item five. Equity Committee Chair Kaylee Galway-Kane to present equity assessment tool.
Great, so this shouldn't be an action item for the board, but just something I wanted to present that the Equity Committee's been working on for actually a while. So, this is, it's mentioned in the introduction, but, so the state of Vermont actually put together an assessment tool for towns that I believe is available on the VLCT website, certainly available through the state website. And there were various other towns, like Berry City Town adopted their own assessment tool, and a few others that we looked at. We, the goal of an assessment tool for the state and these other towns was to basically help boards and committees and town government make sure that decisions were equitable. And so, this is our kind of, we have worked on this a bunch just within our committee. We've, we've showed it to Ope, provided some feedback on it. So, where we are now is that we want to basically try this with a few committees and with a few projects. So, some examples that we've thought about are talking to the planning commission about how this could be useful for the pedestrian audit or potentially in our future budgeting process. Although, at the same time, I think there's some feedback I'd love to get from the board about just the tool in general and what just general thoughts are. But I think we won't really have like a completed draft until we've tried it with a few committees first. Something's really easy to write a paper like this, but to actually have it begin action is very different. So, I'm not suggesting tonight that the board adopt this draft, but simply look at it and provide some feedback. And then we'll provide more feedback once we try it out with different committees. The REC committee was also an example of a group that might be interested in helping with this. So, yeah, I mean, I'm happy to read through it, it's fairly long, but...
No, we can, we can read. Yeah, I thought, yeah, REC would be good, but I think Budgets Trails is also really a small budget, might be an easy one to tie it on. It's a wee little budget.
I was going to raise some interest, I think.
Yeah, so another area that Ope and I have talked quite a bit about in terms of, not just the assessment tool, but the Equity Committee in general is also thinking about in future economic development applications, could a tool like this be helpful in just thinking about, you know, our processes of board in terms of what questions we're asking? Are we asking consistent questions of every applicant, that kind of thing? So, I think the goal of this tool is to also just make sure that we're asking the same questions. But that's also part of Equity too, like, are we asking the same questions of different groups and different people? So, I'll just let you guys know how it goes when we prototype it out. And I will also say too, that, so we just had our first couple of meetings with the Ideal Program, which Hardwick is a part of, which is really exciting. So, there are twelve other communities in the state that have all been selected to be a part of this municipal group that's basically meeting monthly to do different trainings, but then also talk about equity in municipals. And Hardwick, you know, we filled out our survey. I think we're really actually ahead in a lot of ways, which is really cool. We are working on this assessment, we have a resolution, we have a lot of things that are in motion. So, I'm excited to keep reporting to the board about that opportunity, and, yeah. That's it from the Equity Committee.
Great. Folks have questions for Kaylee about this, or about the Equity Committee?
I'm doing some editing, but...
Please do, yeah.
The, one thing I have in the marginalized population group in the glossary for designation, I'd like to include socioeconomic factors in there as well. As a marginalized population. I don't know if that's...
Yeah, I mean, I, so after...
Impoverished.
So, it's, I think it's really interesting, so yes, we need to add that. And then we also need, in this last training that I've done, I think there's some clarity through the state around basically the different populations that we're mandated to provide protection to. And it is more detailed than this, it includes vets, it includes a lot of other things. So, I think we ourselves have some editing to do, but I'll add that, thanks for being...
All right. Anything else? All right, thank you, Kaylee. Next is, where are we? Item six. Select board to consider adopting a resolution to apply for a municipal planning grant to hire a consultant to do feasibility study for new highway garage at the Cary Road property. I thought this was already built.
Oh, sorry, I was...
Yeah.
We're still, I was on the Equity.
So, yeah, so we want to, I, I think, it was what we talked about last time, is we would, we would like to...
Yeah, you gave us the nod, we need to sign a resolution. So, this was in my, the last one was in my manager's report as an informal nod, so we didn't get to the point we did last time where Tracy did a bunch of work.
Yeah.
So, this is, now that we have the informal nod, this is the formal nod, and we'll keep going with it.
So, are we looking at just the Cary Road?
It's just a feasibility study for the Cary Road right now.
But Cary Road versus Creamery?
Yeah.
We don't have any other potential sites to...
No, so, so we're comparing the two.
Both Creamery and Cary, right?
Yeah, that's fine, as long as that's it.
Okay.
Because it says at Cary Road, but we talked about looking at both sites.
And the informal nod was for Creamery and Cary.
Okay. Well, we can, we can adjust that in the...
It's just the scope of the work.
Yeah, we can adjust that in the application.
Yeah, the application, we upstairs it, yeah.
Yep. And it's similar to what Hardwick Rescue did.
Right.
They have a feasibility study for both places as well.
So, just for them, though?
Right, we're going to kind of get on their coattails with our own.
For the garage?
Our garage.
And not for the fire station?
We can add it.
But if they've done that...
It's going to increase our match, it's going to...
Yeah, but I think we should, because it's...
We should look at it, the feasibility.
This is the time to look at it all.
Even if it's fifty years from now, we can at least have a...
If the rescue squad has done a similar feasibility...
So, it's different though than the fire station?
Yeah, and they're, they're looking at a little tiny complex cleared over everything.
Oh, yeah, I think we should add a fire station, but Rescue was already done.
You were only talking about the fire station and town.
I heard, I heard Rescue. Fire station and town.
Fire station and town, right? They did their own thing.
So...
Right, which is one...
But we can still use the same resolution, because we're just applying for the same grant.
I will talk to Tracy about the application.
But we'd like to...
Include as much as we can.
Even if it costs a little more?
Okay.
Right? Because now's the time to figure it out.
We need to look at everything at this point.
Okay.
I mean, we've been ten, ten years.
We figured out, then we know what resources we need, and we can identify what we can go for to get those.
And the need, we know we need all this, so let's look at...
And we definitely know that we need to move through these steps, so that when a funding opportunity arises, we're ready to go.
It may not be built all at once, but we do need to figure it out at all.
Yeah.
Second, motion to adopt a resolution to apply for a municipal planning grant to hire a consultant to do a feasibility study for a highway garage, fire, in a fire department at Cary Road and Creamery.
Well, we wouldn't move the fire department to Creamery Road.
Right. I don't know if we need all of that in the mo, I don't know if the most important part of the motion is to say that we're adopting a resolution for a municipal planning grant.
The scope of the work is going to...
How about, how about you just do that, we're just, you're going to, you're going to adopt the resolution to apply for a municipal planning grant to hire a consultant to do a feasibility study on town-owned property.
For the highway garage in fire department.
Yeah.
Sounds great.
I did.
So, Danny, Danny made the motion, right? So, what happened? You made the motion, wait, who got the second?
I did.
Wiz got the second, and Casey's got something written down, captures.
It was funny, because what you said the first time was exactly what I had typed, like...
I was just reading the agenda.
Ah, yes.
Yeah, I got it, though.
Okay.
Oh, I was running a research.
Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, 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 aye.
Okay, any opposed? Great, motion carries, and thank you for moving this along. We've been talking about this for ages and ages.
And I did find a historical survey of the property under a different name.
Right, and I knew that, and that's how I...
Well, why didn't you tell me?
Well, because I didn't, I didn't remember it till you did that. And that's how Alfred Willie ended up, I think that was like his grandmother or something.
Patton?
That's, that's when he ended up.
Winnie, Winnie Patton?
Yeah, Winifred Patton.
Is related to him.
I, I think that's how they went down somehow.
That's why it was that first person. Yeah.
And that survey, it shows his house in the retro, even though it's not...
I didn't realize he owns the lot right adjacent to the, to the trail.
Well, that's because that was behooved to him by the, by the, whoever.
Yeah.
They put the house there, well, they didn't, you know, they didn't measure, they just moved the house.
Casey, do you need us to sign this?
The rail tour wasn't there at that point, it's just that we're being used.
The municipal one, yeah.
Like the old rail?
Pass that down, please.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the same, yeah, this is the first page.
Sign away.
Yeah.
Right, so that motion carries.
We'll keep track of the original folks.
Yeah, we voted, did we not vote? I thought we did.
Yeah, you had to vote for me?
They're like squirrels.
You captured, we voted, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I did poke Danny, because he didn't... All right. So, and then, thank you, everybody. So, then, I, we switched items seven and eight, so now we're going to go to business manager, Casey Rell, to present the first drafts of fiscal year twenty-four budget for highway, fire, line items, office payroll, and capital budgets.
Can I go?
All right, let's start with highway.
And we're, and just as an intro, we're already braced. Casey sent us a memo that everybody should, and given Danny's discussion on the way in the door about having just paid six dollars and thirty-something cents for diesel fuel, everybody should be somewhat braced that our expenses are going to be greater. Our fuel, our labor has to go up, everything, and our health insurance, so, here we go.
Yes, okay, so I'm going to go right to the bottom here, and then we're going to talk about the factors. So, overall, showing about eleven point seven percent estimated increase for a hundred and thirteen thousand. The biggest factor, our salt went up twenty dollars a ton.
And how many tons did we use?
Twelve hundred-ish.
On, on an average year, a little over a thousand.
Oh, I thought...
Okay, so we're topping an additional twenty thousand dollars per salt.
Yeah, fifteen is what it's got.
So, we'll be, well, if we go through it, it will be fifteen thousand over budget this year, close to it.
I mean, so we could have essentially went a little bit higher there, but we're trying to, you know, we're going from eighty-five to a hundred, eighty-five to a hundred.
Yeah, it's just, twenty dollars a ton doesn't mean anything to me, but I don't know how much, you know, that really put the bottom line down.
Like...
Well, this little storm that we just did, we probably spent probably close to ten thousand dollars.
Wow.
That's between the salt, the fuel, you know, the, your guys' time and all that for overtime and...
That's a really good number, Tom, ten thousand dollars per storm.
Wow, little storm.
It's a little storm.
Yeah, I mean, you actually, well, yeah, you more or less save money more or less on bigger storms, because you're not putting down the salt.
Right.
This little stuff here, I mean, you go out, you put salt down, you know, two hours later, it's covered again, so you go out and do it again. You know, used, used, used to be, the old days, you get one big storm, it's done, and it's over with, and salt once, and, but, anyways, moving on.
So, salt cost. So, winter sand, assuming that we're able to purchase the gravel pit at least for the first year, our sand cost would go down because there is some inventory of sand already prepared there, so that would be what we would anticipate.
And just a side note there, that we are anticipating putting on a warning for town meeting, purchasing a new gravel pit up on Route fourteen.
North.
North, yeah, heading north towards Craftsbury.
Because our gravel pit has about a year left.
Our gravel pit's pretty much played out.
At the most, yeah.
I'll bring that up under new and old business.
Okay, so, yeah.
So, that's, that was that. Brush cutting, the reason for the reduction is because we looked at what we spent this year to rent two tractors for three weeks and the hauling cost, and that's where that figure comes from. And there's a little bit of a cushion built in, so I'm anticipating like three weeks of two tractors again with some hauling cost. So, that's where that comes from. Contract mowing, we know will go up with the cost of diesel fuel pretty significantly. Chloride aligning.
Contract mowing.
Contract mowing is...
Roadside mowing, roadside mowing, like the one, the one pass that we have, yeah, yeah, so, definitely going to go up. Chloride aligning that with what was spent in twenty-two. I'm kind of hitting the highlights on everything. Gravel, we're leaving the same, because as Tom pointed out, this actually doesn't change, because we still have to have the material crushed. We just still have to crusher, have a crusher come in, so that, that really doesn't change.
And is that gravel, that's just for the crusher, or is it for, also for what we buy?
What we buy too.
So, that, that cost could actually go up?
It already has, I think, I think this fall, I think it already went up fifty cents a yard.
They did, yes.
So, in our crushing part, we, I don't think we've seen a bill on that yet, have we?
No.
No, so I don't know exactly what the price was, because he had that staggered because of the cost of fuel.
Yeah.
So...
Right.
So, that's, yeah, a wild card there.
Yeah.
Diesel fuel.
Yeah, it goes up.
Eighteen thousand gallons at five dollars a gallon, and as he pointed out, he just paid six thirty-nine. We get a little bit better price, because we buy a large quantity. But our most recent purchase was five fifty-five, so really, is five dollars enough? It could get as high as eight, so we may want to stay at six dollars a gallon, but for right, for, for right now, for this first draft, eighteen thousand gallons at five dollars a gallon.
So, for diesel, we don't lock in a price like we do for heating fuel?
We used to be able to, but with the volatile market, this year, they would not offer a fixed price. It's like, it, they do like rack plus a margin, so it's serving rack plus a margin. And as I indicated in fiscal year twenty-two, we locked in at two sixty-one. And we ran out of that quota like in May, so the month of June, our rate went up, because we had used our whole quota for the year. But, yeah, two sixty-one, and we just paid five fifty-five, so we're literally more than doubled.
Yeah, right, and that's...
It fluctuates, the one before that was five fifteen, so it's, or five twelve maybe, so it, it fluctuates, but very, very volatile.
Yeah, okay.
So, same thing with gas, just, you know, the cost. We don't have a ton of gas stuff, but just little things, and I mean, so literally, the cost is going to, is going to double. Equipment expense going up a little bit of that, just looking at what we spent in twenty-two and what we've already spent in twenty-three, looking to go up a little bit there for a little bit more cushion.
Is that repair?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's purchases and repairs, and, yeah, we had... Yeah, it's, yeah, it's purchases and repairs, and yeah, we had, um, truck four was twelve thousand dollars recently to repair. We had a lot of the F five fifty, had a bunch of money, and so yeah, it's, it's adding up very quickly. Um, labor and parts are more expensive.
Yes.
Um, let's see here. Grant aid expense, I just wanna point out, like, this is more just for tracking so that we can expense it, but we have revenue to offset it. So it's really kind of just a wash. Culverts have doubled in price, hence the double. Eight thousand dollars, what do we say? That's probably gonna get us like two culverts maybe?
Well, no, I mean, it gets a little bit more. I mean, that four thousand was only one culvert we.
Yeah.
But that was a three footer that we had to put in over on Hardwick, Hardwick Farms.
Depends on what they need, but it's, they're very, very.
But the eighteen inch culverts that we usually get was two hundred and something. This year they were over four apiece.
To have heard like a twenty footer.
Twenty foot length, yeah.
So we can't even cut them in half.
Well, then again, our problem is for highway, like, like Danny would know, everything's made out, out of petroleum for what we do, so.
Yep. Health insurance?
Health insurance, um, our, we are looking at possibly switching companies. We may need to for savings. Um, we are working, our office is working on that now. Um, as far as premiums go, about a twenty percent increase in premium. So yeah, it's, it's pretty brutal, I guess. Um, so yeah, we anticipate. Um, but if we switch, there's some potential savings because their deductible is less, and of course we pay a portion of the deductible, so that's where the savings would be, not really in the premium, mostly in the deductible. And then, um, you know, social security, all those, and retirement are tied to salaries. Um, we are, uh, David is still working with highway union to negotiate because their contract runs out June thirtieth, twenty-three, and we'll be looking at a new three-year. As I pointed out, um, in the last probably six years, um, the raises have been very, very minimal. And they're, you know, they need to catch up to market and.
That's a pretty big jump.
Well, the cost of living is key.
Point seven percent.
Seven percent, yeah.
Yeah, uh huh.
But this is going on the fourteen point nine six.
Point nine six.
Well, we have some people that moved up in steps as well.
Okay, so it's not just.
Yeah.
It's a new CDL.
Yeah.
Right.
There are other prices.
Yep.
Yeah, we have.
This is, then again, this is a draft, it's not final, it's kind of what we're anticipating, so.
Have we typically done, I'm all for paying people what they deserve, but have we typically followed, uh, we haven't typically followed the cost of living for annual increases, correct?
No.
A lot of times we did, because it costs, because the cost of living increases for years were, were quite small.
Not much, right, yeah.
Right, like, they were. More like two, two or three.
Two or three percent.
Yeah, but last year was the first, I think, big change.
Six, this year's another eight.
Right.
But we did not change it to six last.
There was no increase. There was no increase last year because we didn't have, we had a three-year contract with the union.
Okay, so.
And they actually chose, they choose to do a fixed.
It was a dollar.
A fixed amount, like so many cents, and everybody just gets the same.
Okay.
But that's not the case this year?
Not percentage.
We, we don't have.
We don't know exactly.
We've only had one meeting with them, and I had to gather another meeting.
Okay. So we don't know exactly what it's gonna be, but this is, okay, great.
Yeah, this is just something to work with.
Yep.
Okay?
Um, so that's.
That's highway.
That's highway. Um, what did I just leave in the order that I put? Um, fire and line items.
Can I ask a quick question about highway? Casey, do you mean to wait?
No, go, no, go ahead.
The only question I have is just about that mud season material and why it's going down so much?
Um, the, oh, um, it's because at the end of the year, it's, it's not, it's actually staying the same. The reason it's so high in twenty twenty-two is because we had a milder winter and we had funds left over in other categories, so they stockpiled a bunch of stuff at the end of the year that we booked and expensed there.
Okay, so that was kind of an anomaly that year?
Yes, correct, yeah. It was just, um, so we overspent that line because several other lines, like salt and sand were overspent.
Casey, I will say, as I read through this this afternoon and saw that line, mud season material, I thought to myself, there are probably a bazillion budgets in this country that do not have that line. That's a wonderful for mud budget.
It's a really important line.
Okay, so, um, fire department, um, we have to increase their diesel fuel and gas, um, really pretty flat otherwise. Um, just, you know, an increase of twenty-eight hundred dollars, um, went up a little bit on equipment repair based on current year experience. As you can see, it was what, seventy-two hundred and twenty-two, and it's already been close to that maybe in this year. Yeah, so we went up a little bit on that, um, but, I mean, it's, it's seven percent, but it's still only twenty-eight hundred dollars, so it's not significant, and really that's your diesel fuel. We already kind of have an estimate that dispatch is gonna go up about seven percent, so this is.
You have an estimate for dispatch, you said?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Based on what the PD paid?
Um, no, I got a letter from LaMoyale with preliminary what they think the budget's gonna go up, yep. So that's fire department, any questions about that?
They don't see your raise?
Huh?
What?
Fire department?
Yeah.
Did, how come my paper doesn't show?
It's just on the next, it's right after office.
Okay, so line items.
Right, we did.
Line items, um, overall are going down, we'll talk about that, so.
Yeah.
Auditing, we most likely are gonna need a single audit, um, so I went up a little bit on that because that cost would be shared, like a single audit is probably like six thousand, sixty-five hundred, but depending, we may get some help from Yellow Barn, if Yellow Barn contributes to that. Um, if it turns out that the only reason we need an audit is because of ARPA, if ARPA's the only thing that puts us over, then my understanding is that it's a little less than, like, it's, it's not a full single audit, it's a little less invasive sort of, I don't know if that's true, but um, less costly because if, if ARPA's the only thing, because obviously there's a lot of small towns that, um, don't regularly have single audits, but the ARPA may cause them to, so they are doing some flexible terms with that.
It's asking me why. That's kind of.
So, um, okay, fireworks, the new minimum show is six thousand dollars instead of five. It went from four, it was five last year, and now it's six thousand dollars. So what that means is that we always used to do, um, so last year we did a five thousand dollar show, requested business donations, and collected two thousand dollars in donations, so that our net effect was three thousand. With the new cost, we would have to try to collect three thousand dollars, and the other kicker is that they want us to commit in January, to prepay in January to get a discount. Um, you get, you get like ten percent free if you pay in January. But the problem is that you're paying for it, not knowing what you're going to get for donations. So you sort of risk that what if you didn't get any donations? You shelled out the whole amount.
Right.
And, I mean, we do often get fifteen hundred, two thousand, twenty-five hundred, um, but again, we have to sort of commit to six thousand and hope we can raise three.
So it's six thousand?
Is the minimum show now.
It's like a thousand gallons of diesel fuel.
So, so last year, I was at the, I was at Atkins Field, and we had a great band playing, and we had to stop the band so we could watch the fireworks. I say we spend a little extra money on a band.
Yeah, it won't cost six thousand dollars.
Through the fire, through the, well, last year's fireworks. More people come back.
And so it's the other piece of this.
PTSD for, for old timers with fireworks?
Are there other, are there other vendors that we can look at?
No.
It has to be somebody that is insured and can come and do it.
That's why it's seventy percent off all the time.
Oh, that's a bunch of free fireworks too, right?
Yeah.
So, and so we run into this right now is they're wanting us to commit for our current fiscal year, and it went up to six. Um, and so I was like, yeah, we're not ready to sign any contract right now, um, because again, if you look at our budget, we only put four thousand because that we would have budgeted before we knew the show went up to five, and now it's went up to six.
And they take, we didn't take a year off.
And they won't take the payment.
Can you, can you just make a motion for that?
We don't, we don't.
Why do I have to take out the bullets?
We don't, no.
No, we don't, we can just choose not to have it.
Yeah, we're gonna need a motion.
Well, this is, this is, we're not in the budget, so yeah.
With COVID, we did that. We took a year off.
And I, I don't really need to do fireworks.
It's kind of a support, um, thing to Spring Festival, so what if we change the, our, change our focus and make it a Spring Festival line item? And then have a conversation with Kiwanis about how we can support Spring Festival in a different way.
Well, because we're able to help the rest of the department.
A lot of people liked what was going on at Atkins last year, so.
Yeah, it was a fun time.
So then you can just be to support that instead.
I'm not a huge fan anymore. I used to be.
So we leave three thousand in there, and we just call it as Spring Festival.
Cause animals problems, cause people problems.
Emergency room visits.
Yeah, so it's, uh, times have changed.
That's not for the licensed ones.
So, so we, we're not taking stuff out yet, we're just talking.
Right, we're just talking.
Right.
Yeah.
We can, we can start.
We know where that one's going though.
We can start spreading that.
We may as well take that one out.
Me too.
So are we leaning towards, well, so speaking, you know, this was gonna be on my new business, but for this coming Memorial Day, like, um, they want us to, you know, commit to a date.
To six thousand?
It's six thousand.
I say we commit to spending the money on something better than fireworks.
So we are gonna skip two thousand twenty-three. Yeah, we have four thousand in the budget, but it's a six thousand dollar show.
But we don't need, we don't.
No, I don't.
So, okay, so we're gonna take twenty twenty-three off.
And I don't, I don't know if that's the best, that's, no, we can do better. I, I think we need to continue our commitment for Memorial Day.
There's twelve thousand dollars.
For Spring Festival.
We, we supported Spring Festival this year. The recreation took some of their unused community programming and put it towards the Spring Festival to create that whole activity at Atkins, so we did contribute to that this year.
That was.
So, um, street dance stands, all that stuff.
We did good today.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright, so moving on, um, professional services, just based on experience of cost and the fact that like attorneys have gone up probably fifty dollars an hour in their fees, um, so looking to increase that.
So why does that not come even close to the actual?
It's because, um, landworks, bridge stuff went in that category, like stuff that we actually had to pay for, professional services. So if you back that out.
It wasn't just lawyer fees.
Correct. If you back that out, we're closer to seventy-five hundred, so.
But are we, okay.
So.
Uh, professional services and line items.
Um.
I'm just thinking that we probably, I feel like we're gonna have more of those other types of professional services moving forward, and we're talking about.
Well, as I get that, it's.
Well, like, um.
Deal with some of the stuff.
You'll do the surveys?
I'll do the stuff on my.
Well, so, I actually have a new expense line in the current fiscal year that is bridge expenses because of the hundred thousand dollars that was committed to that, so I have a new expense category for that, so those, it was just because we weren't at that point yet, so it got booked there because that was the most appropriate category, so.
Alright.
Cemetery, okay, um, Judavine, we don't have figures for them. The reason why it looks like that is because we don't know who they're gonna hire for a library director at this point, um, and it's all going to depend on what, um, health insurance is a big factor. Um, like, we should, we'll need to plan for a family health insurance plan possibly. Um, so until, that's why we thought we're gonna have the library come in December, and that way, hopefully by then, they will know who they're hiring, and we'll have a better idea. But in this initial thing, sort of went in assuming that the person will need a family health insurance plan.
But again, that's a placeholder.
Correct, yep, just for now. Um, cemeteries, um, I think David brought this up to you before, that Fairview and.
Excuse me, Casey, this Memorial Day line item, is that what we were?
It's the cemetery flags, basically, that, it really covers the cost of cemetery flags for Memorial Day.
Should that be in cemeteries?
Um, well, they always do it right around Memorial Day, and it just always gets paid from there. Caspen Lake asked for an additional three hundred and fifty dollars, it's pretty, pretty nominal for, um, like taking care of the bathrooms and stuff, right? Is that correct?
Yeah, and, uh, purchasing, if we, we're gonna, we asked for our ARPA funds to purchase cameras, and we're gonna put some new signs up. And, uh, just an increase in the cost of the mowing and taking care of the beach.
This is, yeah, Caspen.
That's for, we split that cost.
Yeah.
Um, so I think.
I think it was a ten percent increase from last year.
Yes, ten percent, yeah, correct. Um, cemeteries, as we, um, I think David had mentioned to you before that Fairview and Hardwick Cemeteries were asking for an additional eighteen thousand dollars for like stone repair.
They were actually asking for twenty. I've put them in touch with the Daughters of the American Revolution. Um, they're gonna take care of the cemetery up on Maple Street, and then, um, the association is working on other quotes, so this number could come down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm confused.
And that's not, go ahead.
Are those cemeteries that we manage?
They're not ours.
No, no.
So.
We give them money for like mowing, pretty much.
This was brought up by the new sexton they hired. So it's, um, I told them that they need to do a little better job than the guy they hired coming up with work for himself to do at the cemetery. So these numbers are gonna go down.
Do they submit a budget?
They do not submit a budget. I asked for their financials. Um, I got a little.
Because wouldn't this line be for the, is it five that the town?
Um, it, it's usually eighteen thousand, um, and that is sandborne cemetery mowing.
Doesn't the town have responsibility of five cemeteries?
Yeah.
And then Fairview is not the town's.
Right, but this line item covers Fairview and Hardwick. We give them twelve thousand, and then we pay for sandborne mowing. And then the other cemetery is the, the highway mows.
Fairview and Hardwick, you mean Fairview and Main Street?
So.
So we're, we're, we're already paying for the mowing of those cemeteries.
We give those two cemeteries seven, one is seven and one is five thousand a year, which basically is for their mowing, and then we pay the sandborne mowing.
Cemetery situation needs attention.
It does, it seems like.
I feel pretty. I feel very comfortable.
I haven't heard us working on it very much. I've heard us talking about it.
We have an update coming for you, Danny, you can just hold.
Oh, you girls are on it?
The wheels of, of local government, or all government.
I, especially the cemetery government. Um, I personally just feel uncomfortable putting that much money towards that when we don't have our cemetery processes and policies worked out, which we're working on.
But our processes won't apply to these two, because they're not under this like.
But I think that we should have a process of asking for money.
Right.
We need to see their financials, yeah.
Which we don't have, so that's what I'm saying.
And those stones are gonna be even more broken the next year.
Who owns the real estate of these cemeteries, the town?
Taylor Hardwick.
The one we're tired of.
Not Fairview, not Fairview Department.
Yes. Yes, if they decide to abandon themselves or whatever, just go away.
Then it comes to us, I know, but while they haven't.
Well, they haven't, yes.
Well, the Saint Norbert's side of Fairview, I believe, was deeded to the church, so we don't know.
But we pay to take care.
No.
No, we have nothing to do with that.
Mowing.
Right.
It's just the Protestant side. Damn. That's your freeloaders. That's me, my side, my team.
So maybe we can come back to this because we're still, we still got time to go with this.
There's more work to be done on this, for sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
But you get the general sense.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Alright, so moving on, why, why do the capital funds go down so dramatically? I was trying to balance that against the stuff below.
Sure, um, and it's, well, so capital equipment has payments in it, which are now in here down below.
Okay.
So one thirty, so for instance, um, the loader payment, the loader two and greater, those were all in the capital equipment as well. And I just redid that schedule when you come over here, just to.
Yeah.
Realign it, um, taking those payments. Realign it, um, taking those payments out. Um, so they're here and so that's, the one thirty is what I was able to come up with if we pull those payments out of the schedule. And the fact that obviously everything is going up, so trying to minimize, so it's, that's.
But we don't wanna, we don't, we wanna be careful about decreasing any capital.
Right, but the schedule still holds up, the schedule still holds up with all the replacements that we need with that amount, so.
Um, and that.
Capital Roads, we knew, remember we bumped up last year for Center Road, for anticipation of Center Road. It was like a one-time bump up. So it's, um, and I also took, there's two payments on here that were in there, um, actually no, actually one, the Macville. So that's about, so really we're like, we would be at a hundred and fifty instead of a hundred and ninety.
So we were at two oh five before, right?
And then we bumped up, correct.
So why would we not be back to two oh five?
Um, same thing here, so we. So this is what it looks like. It just cut, let me get it a little bit bigger. So if we come back down, um, this, this is what the schedule looks like.
Sorry, can you scroll just a touch so I can see the top? So why are paving in twenty-four, twenty-five, why is that? Why is paving going down?
Just because we have, um, it's what, like what items for paving down here?
Yeah, so we're, we're, okay, so we're gonna pave less.
Hold on one second.
Yeah, we won't be paving all those streets.
Twenty-four is.
North Main Street, Vermont Avenue.
Vermont Avenue, then twenty-five is Highway Acres.
So ninety to seventy.
Does Vermont Avenue need to be repaved?
Part of it.
Part of it?
Yeah.
And that's the part we're talking about?
On the North Main Street side, going up over there.
Right, we're talking three years out, so.
What's that?
And we're not talking about Paul Street.
What, North Main?
Two seasons out.
Vermont Avenue?
No.
No, that's next year. Fiscal year day.
And, and uh, North Main?
So you pay with the, at the beginning of the.
So North Main needs a little more than just a top coat.
I, yeah.
Well, that's what he was talking about, and if it does, it, it's gonna run more than ninety thousand.
That's what I'm.
Just that one road.
I'd like to see us look for, well, I'd like to see us look for other funds to be able to do more on that road.
It'd be nice to get the um, stormwater runoff into the storm drains.
Right.
And, I mean, also by twenty twenty-six, that Center Road budget's probably gonna be a lot higher, right?
That's only like half of it.
That's not even.
We talked about, well, and so five fifty and we're hoping to get um, some grant for like one seventy-five maybe is what we were hoping for. Because we haven't had any paving money in a few years and so we can, if we, like after a while, we can get moved back towards the top of the list. So our thinking was five fifty would be our portion, but.
Seems like we just paved Center Road.
But we would need additional one seventy-five.
I think we should give Center Road a degree throw.
Just the road?
No, I say we make him a package deal and give it to Lake Harbor too. Yeah, I have everything they need.
So.
Oh, man.
Yeah, I don't know about decreasing our contribution to this, well, to any capital.
There's absolutely no way we can focus on tracking budget five years out with the mindset we have right from this current.
In the current climate.
In the current climate.
You mean just seeing inflation so out of control?
Yeah, just so out of control right now, you know, I don't think we should put a lot of, a lot of worry into that more than three years out right now. Because my mind is not willing to, it's not.
Right.
So I'm thinking it's six, seven dollars a gallon of fuel now, and in three years it's gonna be ten dollars a gallon. You know, your mind, my mind is just thinking that, it's not budget.
Well, take this home, put it under your pillow. But so again, think about it for the next two weeks.
I guess that's the big question. That's the big question is if, if probably things are gonna get more, then should we be taking money out of the, out of capital? Like, should we be decreasing?
Yeah, that's my concern. I don't.
Capital is a concern if it's gonna be more expensive this, if we're talking about next, next year.
My, I, my thought is we should not, absolutely, we should be, we should not try anything right now.
Yeah, I mean, my general thought with the, like with all the budgets is we're, it's gonna be high and so.
Yeah, this is not, there'll be a three, three percent here, no.
No.
But, but we can't make, we can't let that happen either because that is just gonna make things worse for, for everybody.
Um, not to sound like a, like a prepper or anything, but we have to, if, if we're along those lines of this huge budget increase, we need to start looking at things that we either, like luxuries that we add, that we can't do.
Fireworks, six thousand dollars.
In prioritizing, six thousand dollars isn't a cut in.
No, but that's, that's a big puzzle.
Right. In prioritizing things of the, and on, on public safety.
Right.
And, and moving in that direction.
Correct. And that's gonna be a very unpopular statement. It's about to come out of my mouth, but that's turns the way I feel about some of this stuff that we're still spending money on the rail trail about. You know, future planning and stuff, we can, we can wait two years before we continue to do that stuff. And that's just my opinion, one example of it.
Yeah, I don't think we've spent a lot of money.
No, we haven't, but we've been, there's opportunities to spend money.
Right.
Is that fair? You know, maybe some of, some other things, we, we need to start looking at some of these things, maybe on the development issue as well.
Yeah, we're just gonna have to look at everything, I think, this year.
Doesn't matter what it is, I don't think.
And, and we have to prioritize things that are essential talent services.
Which is why I asked him, Vermont Avenue really needs to be repaid.
Right.
Or just part of it does.
Or Center Road, we talked about that last year.
Well, Tommy, we look to you to decide what needs it. I mean, the point part is we're gonna spend, we need to, it's very important we spend the same amount of money, whether at Schoeston, Vermont Avenue, or Maple Street.
Right.
You know, just because there's no, I know that we can't say we're not gonna pave anything for three years. That's not gonna help us, so we just need to make sure what we do is prioritized.
And that's why that list changes a lot of times when you run into.
Right, I mean, I try to do areas and sections.
Right.
Right now, as it stands, we probably have, we got Highway Acres, we got Marshall Street, Buffalo Street, North Main, and Vermont Avenue. And then we're done paving, because everything in this town else has been paved. You know, if you take a ride around all the roads that we have in the village now, they're actually in pretty good shape.
I agree, a hundred percent.
You know, those are the only roads that we have really left that need some attention, but then you got the two big roads.
Yeah.
Oh, I did hear a big thank you for Montgomery Road. Pass them out long.
Roads are in good shape, roads are in really good shape right now. Wow.
Backroads too?
Three days ago, yes.
Yeah.
Ah, they were in really good shape.
Yeah.
Mowing really was good, the backroads are good, ditching was good.
Yeah, I, I wanna pose a question to Tom, and it's a thought I had.
I got no answers.
The mowing, so if you look at what we did in three weeks with those, those mowers, we pushed back the roads quite a bit. And we have two items in the road budget for roadside mowing, and then.
I know what you're trying to do. You wanna combine us mowing the roadside along with the other one.
The true.
And take away the seven thousand for just the.
It's an extra pass.
But the problem is, I don't know what, well, it's not time, it's the scheduling.
Right.
Because I know other towns are probably already in that schedule for mowing roadside.
I can find out tomorrow.
So that would be the dilemma right there. If not, then, then yes, you could do that.
I was actually looking at the municipal bids website today. The bio.
I mean, you guys would probably do a better job.
Forty grand, and it was not, not, it didn't have that many hours on it, just saying.
No, I, I hear you.
I mean, if it's sitting over there, them guys can use it when, when they have time.
Yeah.
It, it would be, it would be better. The problem with Pete's is agreed, they're scheduled, they are most probably booked already, because anybody that rented one this past year.
Right, in the same town, that's their own.
The only reason, the weeks we did was because they were holiday weeks.
Yeah.
So anyway, we should be looking into it.
Right.
Because, I mean, I think we did a good job.
You think it changed.
Kurt did a good job on that, and I think we're in a good position where we could maintain that a lot easier than.
Yeah, but we would need to, yeah, because now we could go with like a flail mower to mow the grass and the brush, because we cut the big stuff, you know what I'm saying?
We got a few more roads that we need to do.
Right, we, yeah. What about, we also talked about having an actual crew to manage dozens of electric trees and stuff.
They're gonna, I've got him on the schedule for April.
Yeah.
For, for this budget here.
Yep, no, that's one of those.
All right, so what else is, uh?
Um, so actually, I highlighted that fifteen thousand because I just noticed that um, normally I automatically correspond these lines to what is in the um, in the, in the capital fund so that it flows over. But the fire fund didn't have the linked formula, so it said eighty thousand, but really um, you come over here and it's actually only fifteen, but it's, it's fifteen because the two bond payments are down below. So it's fifteen plus fifty-four, so it's really.
Oh, just because you moved.
Yes, yeah, so it's not, it's not really that much of a decrease because you take the fifteen thousand plus the two bond payments is really, because they're, we're not gonna pay them out of capital anymore. Um, the auditors recommend, and I, and I agree a hundred percent, it's actually easier for people, um, rather than us transferring money to capital and paying debt payments, it's much easier to just put them on here, what they are. So that's what I'm trying to transition to doing because it makes it clear, especially to voters, like what our debt payments are. Because they don't really get to see that when we just transfer to capital and pay them out of there. Um, so basically, all of those payments that were being paid out of capital equipment and capital roads, those are just shown here. And I included gravel pit bond payment if that passes.
Good.
Um, and what that is, is that's really just an interest payment the first year. Um, and so basically, unfortunately, borrowing rates are not very favorable right now. Um, this, this is an estimated twenty years at five percent.
Where are we gonna get five percent?
Um, well, the rate they quoted me was like four point three eight as of right now. This is bond, you know, bond. So, so like I went up to five percent, which we're talking six months from now, so five percent, um, interest only. Like the first full year would be around forty-seven thousand, and then it would kinda go down forty-six, forty-five and, and pay it down gradually. But um, forty-seven thousand would be the highest. So it would jump from eighteen-five up to forty-seven thousand the next year.
And we do that through the bond bank?
Correct.
Yeah. So um, all right, so forty, the first real full year is what, forty-six, you said, forty-seven?
Forty-seven.
Yeah, but still, I mean, that is, I mean, I really think that that's quite a, quite a deal for us as a town to have that um, asset and be able to get our gravel and our sand and.
And because of the, the estimated life of the asset, which we think was, what was it, was it thirty-ish maybe, something like that? Do you remember? Did they give us an estimate on the life of the gravel pit?
Yeah.
Do you remember how much it was? Because we could, like if it was.
Thirty-two years.
So then, I wouldn't recommend it, but we could go out thirty years for a lower payment, but.
And they started to go twenty and then coast in the last twelve.
Yes, correct, yeah. I, I wouldn't recommend it, but it, it could be done. Or you could do twenty-five just to lower the payment a little bit, but um.
Well, it's, they also talked about um, renting out the Sugar Woods. There's lots of other potential opportunities for revenue there.
Yeah, sure, you can get rid of it.
Sorry, so as I said, I.
It's a great way to, yeah, spend your inheritance.
I wonder if that's gonna go with like diesel fuel.
Syrup?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, probably so.
Well, it is for all those people that are making it with diesel fuel.
That's true. Yeah, right, a lot of people are burning.
A lot of people are burning oil.
Oil.
Which is terrible.
Um, all right, so where were we?
We're here, so um.
But why, okay, so I'm still, maybe I should wait till we look at these things, but to me, I feel like for the capital equipment, capital road and capital general, they should only have gone down by the amount that you slid over here for payments.
Yeah, um, I just, so because I just fixed that eighty thousand dollars here, I just shifted twenty thousand each into equipment and road, just to, because.
Because I get us back to where we were.
Close, yeah, we're, we're actually less, we're, we're less than we were, but, so one fifty, equipment and the two equipment payments are twelve and fifty-five, so that's sixty-seven. So we're, we're higher than one ninety, sixty-seven plus one fifty, plus two seventeen. So we're really at two seventeen for equipment with, with the switch I just barely did, and we would have been like one ninety-seven without that.
Okay.
So.
All right, so it's higher.
It is, it is still an increase.
Casey, I don't know if this is possible, it's just like a way of looking at it, would it, would it be easier if, if the, those payments were directly underneath those capital fund lines? I don't know if that's, it's just a formatting.
Oh, you're saying like the, the two equipment payments be below equipment and then the two.
Just so it seems like they're more, kinda like the way the fire, the fire truck is.
Yeah, yeah, the, the fire truck does happen to be underneath fire.
It's just a little easier to kinda connect the two, the three that way.
So same thing with your fire, it's fifteen plus thirty-two plus twenty-one, so you're at sixty-eight, so it's slightly less, slightly less, sixty-eight, um, instead of, you know.
And what about capital general?
Capital general, it would be one fifteen plus, it would be just one fifteen. We have to look at that, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to look at that.
I don't know that we wanna short that. And what about the capital road?
Capital road would be one fifty plus Macville is one seventy, and, and again, we upped it way up to three oh five.
But we have been two oh five.
Yeah, so we're, we're still doing, we are doing less, about thirty thousand.
Anyway, I just wanna.
Yeah.
I just don't wanna short those going forward, so.
Well, so we'll look at those schedules when we get there. Um, so again, all those debt payments are there, including the post gravel pit bond payment, um, tax mapping. David said there's potentially a feature that we may need to purchase for that as an upgrade.
Is there online tax maps or, okay.
Yeah, so looking at that, an increase possibly thirty-five hundred, um, cybersecurity went up on that because we're gonna have increased monthly costs with that. Rep department is just in my preliminary discussions with them, they are coming to the December first meeting. Um, and rescue squad, I don't have any figures yet, so I just did four percent. So line items are going down about seventy-five thousand, but before we're done, that may not be the case if we decide to invest capital.
Yeah, last year rescue came to us with a big increase.
Right, but we're, right, so we're like seventy, I mean, we're seventy-one in this current year, so.
Yeah, all right.
We'll see.
We'll see what they ask.
And that, Lindsay's actually coming in tomorrow, so.
She's about to.
Yeah.
All right, so capital equipment, just wanna look up here and recap, so capital equipment is the one fifty plus um, the loader and the loader two and greater plus seventy-seven thousand down below. So it's a hundred, it's really, it essentially would have been a side of two seventeen.
And the, the, the loader two and grader, that's um, those are for new, that's for new equipment, right?
Correct, we had estimated that for like a lease to own type thing.
And that's because that's what we did, that's what we've done before for those.
And so basically what we, it was like five hundred and fifty thousand for the two pieces is what we estimated, ten years, fifty-five thousand, like that's just what we came up with for an estimate. I think maybe, when we look at that, maybe it's a little bit less, but that's a starting point that we use. Um, okay, so let's go.
And is there a reason, sorry, is there, I feel like those are the only things we have left that we don't save up for and pay for? Because, well, we have the, I mean, the fire trucks, we've swapped, we trade that around so that the plan is if going forward, we pay out of the capital budget, right?
Correct.
So, so why do we treat the grader and loader differently, or is it, we just need to break out of that somehow? We, it's hard to break out of, we have to plan to break out of it for the next time.
Because they're, yeah, they're pretty large, I mean.
Right.
It sounds like a fire truck.
Right, but this did, basically because our forefathers.
Didn't plan for it.
Saved the money for the first grader, you know what I'm saying? They paid for the first grader, so we never paid for the first fire truck. We all borrowed for the first fire truck.
Right, which is why it's hard to break out of that.
Right. And we, we inherited a, a capital equipment fund that had money in it to. We inherited a, a capital equipment fund that had money in it to purchase. The fire department, we inherited a bond, you know what I'm saying, so it's, we would have to initially come up with a way that.
We have to increase.
Buy one for cash at some point to get.
Right, the next time, which would be like in twenty years or something, are they twenty years?
Be fifteen, sixteen, twenty dollars by then, so.
Oh, yeah, are those, are those twenty-year items, the loader and grader?
Fifteen years.
No, the loader and grader, fifteen?
Oh, loader's greater.
Oh, loader and grader is only ten, I don't, I thought we do ten.
Fifteen, fifteen years.
And that, okay.
Alright, so capital equipment.
Twenty-five, thirty.
Capital equipment, as I explained, it shows some funds set aside a hundred and fifty, but then you add the sixty-seven thousand dollars. That used to be right here in these two things, I had fifty-five thousand as a line item payment and then we have one more payment on the loader one for twelve thousand, so those are shifted out to line items. Um, and this, and then, so we go down for this year, but then we start climbing back up again. Um, and, yeah, so it's like.
Can we stay, yeah, we never even approached zero really, can we?
No, the lowest we get in this scenario is like two.
Yeah, that's, that's gonna change.
Sixty-nine, sixty-nine.
I mean, that's gonna change that all around with taking that payment out of there, cause I mean, previously we would have that fifty-five grand and, yeah. Which went in and out, so just pulling that out of there has changed things quite a bit.
Yeah.
I mean, we're no longer, we're no longer, we're no longer doing it the same way and I'm not a funny ass person, but. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
We're falling, we're, we're now basically borrow money, make the payments. I mean, it's, it's essentially a lease is up to zero interest loan, it hurts.
Well, so the difference was is we're really just putting it in a different bucket and paying it out of it. We're just paying it out of the general fund instead of transferring it to capital and paying it out of capital, we're skip, we're just eliminating a step that isn't necessary. So we don't need to reserve for it, cause we're gonna pay for it out of a regular point.
That's affecting our capital equipment schedule because that money is not passing through it.
Yeah, so we're not putting as much in.
So we, the capital's equipment schedule is worked by randomly putting money in, putting the same amount of money in every year to spending it randomly, randomly different odds, right? So you've got money going in, you've got money going out, but we have some years when that, there's a balance in there of saved money for a purchase. Now that we're coming out of capital, we're never gonna have that balance.
Oh, no, right, it's not gonna be as big.
It's not gonna be as big and that, that.
But you also don't have the expense either.
Right.
Well, you don't, but it's still, my, my thinking is, is that that ever flow of the balance is gonna be different with that amount in there.
Because we can't completely predict.
Because we're not, sometimes we're not gonna have that big balance we're gonna need for a big purchase. Because we're no longer, eventually if we switched everything to this, there'd be no money in this account, everything would be.
But the purchases are already, the money is always already allocated for the purchases.
Okay, alright.
But Danny's point is why even, basically why have a capital fund if you're just gonna spend, is that what you're saying?
Well, yeah, not, not YF, not necessarily YF, but it's just a different, it's different, that's all, I guess is my point. Cause right now, we're kinda doing it two different, we have been doing it two different ways. We've been doing it the same way, we're showing it different now. I guess that's what I mean. Right, as long as it works, I, I'm good with it, trust me.
Yeah.
Well, at least if it's in there, you can see when it's due for replacement.
Yeah.
And the other one, you're not gonna see it.
Well, I'm still keeping it down, like I'm not taking this schedule off the bottom here, so it would, it would still give us an idea of what we need to look at.
Yeah, like when I look at.
Like loader number one, two thousand thirty-one, that's the budget that we would need to put. Either, you either put it back in here as a straight purchase or put it as payment. Like I'm not taking that information off the bottom down here where we talk about when stuff gets replaced.
But when do we replace loader one and, well, the loader, when do we replace loader and grader? Well, yeah, we're not gonna replace.
We're not gonna replace loader one.
Right, so it's loader two and grader one.
Cause we're gonna knock down the one loader.
Right, right, I get that, so.
But is that gonna work if we have the gravel pit? Yeah, okay.
Alright, as long as it's.
Yeah, this, this information is gonna stay on here.
It does.
When are we gonna replace these two?
Right, actually, that's a really good.
And we're gonna be in a situation where if we, if we need to s- direct it out, that's the other thing is.
Oh, actually, no, we wanna put it in, so fifteen, so if we replace in twenty-four, if we do loader two and grader and their fifteen-year life, then they're due again in twenty thirty-nine. So twenty thirty-nine, we need to put in a placeholder for the loader and the grader, right? That's how we track it, and then, and then it's a purchase instead of a lease next time.
Right.
And then we break out of that, it's like, may as well go ahead and try.
How much is your spot up there?
None of us are gonna, well, Kaylee's young enough to be here then.
So remember.
You have said that, so it goes.
Alright, that's perfect, we got, that's always growing.
Eight o'clock.
Perfect, good.
Yeah, so if we put it in there for five fifty, and then what we can do is, um, I can work a long, like where it's, um, where it goes down, say to, like maybe in a couple of years, I'll start raising about ten and see how we can get it to be positive.
Yeah, or close.
Okay, I got you. Alright, so capital fire, it's pretty straightforward, we're still good on the schedule, um, those bond payments are just moved out of here. So that's why the amount is less.
Yep.
Because those payments are moved out.
Yep.
Capital roads, we talked about, I did go up to one fifty, if we think we need to go more, we can have a discussion, um, because it looks, sounds like maybe the ninety is more like a hundred and ten, maybe?
What's that?
Hundred and twenty, the paving for twenty twenty-four and what.
I don't know, cause this year hot mix was a hundred and something dollars a ton. I know when I got a price on grinding that, just down a couple inches, that was over thirty grand, so.
Grinding what?
West church, cause O P was thinking about, maybe we could grind it down and lower, you know, to get the curb in back up.
Yeah.
But all the structures down there are at height, so you're gonna have to build the sidewalks up. Down on West church.
Which means the law is, I don't understand.
All the structures are.
The pipes.
Yes, so your manholes, gate valves and all that down through to, they're at height.
There's a catch basin that's, there's like, uh, an inch and a half left for the water running.
So O P was thinking maybe if we ground that down dirt, we could lower all the manholes and stuff like that, but we can't, cause they are at height.
Oh, so they're not all shimmed up?
No.
Like other, cause every place else, you have.
Everywhere else, you could have, you know, one foot lift on them or whatever, but that street is not, that is where it's at.
Really?
Yeah.
That's so strange.
Yeah.
It's probably the first one they did.
That was good, Rich.
Alright, so I just made a tentative change, um, I put a hundred and thirty in as cost with setting aside one seventy, um, and that looks okay, um, for a projection out, bring us down to like thirty-one thousand estimated after.
Center road, yes.
And we would need to then take twenty twenty-seven off.
Yep.
But, um, to build it back up a little bit, um, so, and then if we come back here, then.
Well, you wouldn't, you actually couldn't do some in twenty twenty-seven than that.
True, you could do a small amount, um.
You could do even a hundred thousand, right?
Yep, yep, if I did that, yeah, we could just, yeah, so we wouldn't need, then I would just do like, to be determined, cause I don't know what that would be at this point, but. Okay, so, so we'll, we'll go with that for right now.
Okay.
Um, and then capital general. Um, looked to, I again was kinda just tentatively trying to bring some numbers down, um.
I think. Oh, I have some questions, I don't wanna get into an East Harvick poll, but I was wondering about the village improvements and what those were. I know we talked about after getting ARCA funds that we were going to, we decided not to give funds to East Harvick for basically road and sidewalk improvements because we were gonna build those into this year's budget. Wondering if we're gonna do that and if this is that or what this line is. And then at some point, we gotta talk about the East Harvick bridge, cause that is.
I've got a plan for that.
Okay, that doesn't have to be tonight, but it's.
Yep.
And then, and maybe think about the, in the highway budget that we looked at, the six hundred dollars that we've been putting towards sidewalks for however long and what that, the East Harvick sidewalks, that line item and what that actually like.
It just pays for the shoveling of the sidewalks.
Norman gravel.
For the post office and the, and the town sidewalk?
Yep.
Okay.
You get paid five ninety-nine.
Okay, no, I just wasn't sure like that makes sense.
That's, that's for labor.
Perfect, thanks, Norman. Um, so yeah, I was just, wasn't sure with that village improvements, if that was kinda going to be going towards.
Sidewalks and drainage.
Do we need to have a separate East Harvick line or can we just commit to having East Harvick on a schedule for sidewalks in our overall budget?
We don't have a sidewalk schedule though, in general, like for any, we don't have a official sidewalk.
I know, I know it makes sense to have a line item that says we're doing something specifically to East Harvick, I just wanna make sure we're. I don't know if we need to separate it, if we're gonna be doing sidewalks in East Harvick, I don't know if we need to separate it into a village improvement line that's kinda vague or if we just need to have. Or it would be easier to come up with a schedule for sidewalks, saying in twenty twenty-five, we're gonna do all the sidewalks in East Harvick. We're gonna get a ready grant for it, we're gonna fund it out of our highway, I just worry about like separating it out a little too much. I think it's really important, obviously, to invest in East Harvick, I think, especially the sidewalks and drainage have been neglected for a really good time and need the help. But also five thousand dollars a year for a sidewalk improvement is not gonna go very far, so if we're gonna really like put money to East Harvick, I think we should do it in some sort of schedule in the highway or in the, wherever our sidewalk line is and do it properly. I just don't know, I, we'd have to save for thirty years and five thousand dollars a year to redo all sidewalks in East Harvick. If that was what that line was going.
We could do, it'd be a match for potentially a grant.
Sure, and that's great, if that's like, if that's really what that line item was for, is more for like matching funds for grants. I just wanted to figure out, cause it's a new item.
Yep.
What exactly that, that.
It came from conversations with Eno.
But maybe we should just have that in the sidewalk.
That's what I'm wondering, is if that's like, if that's intended for sidewalks?
Like, no, the one, the line above, just combine the East Harvick, the, that dollars, the East Harvick village improvement dollars into the sidewalk expense, the line above, and just create a sidewalk schedule that says we're gonna do those. And whatever else, I mean, really, really, we should do, it wouldn't be a bad idea to have a sidewalk schedule.
Because up there are a lot of sidewalks.
Yeah.
And there are a lot of sidewalks, there are a lot of places that used to have sidewalks.
I, I think, I think the.
Macville Road needs sidewalks.
The purpose is really important.
It's very dangerous, it's even more dangerous because the brush don't get cut off the lawn, which.
I think it is important to, to show.
It makes the kids walk around the road.
There's like a balance, there's a funny balance, right, there's the balance of East Harvick is Harvick, right? Our Harvick budget, it's not like a different budget, so I recognize that and that's, we talked about that a bunch. But I also recognize that there are quite a few things that are sometimes weight to the very end to happen in East Harvick. So I think that there's a push for the residents of East Harvick to have, to show, like, like with the paving that happened last year, that those tax dollars are going into East Harvick Village as well, because I think there's some like, we wanna show that there's sidewalks being done eventually in roads, and I think that paving was a good example of, of that. So I don't know how to do it, but maybe it's a sidewalk schedule, maybe it's like a road sign schedule. Um, I would just love to, like, village improvements is just a little like open to me, I think.
Okay.
Although it does give, um, something for Eno to potentially show when they're trying to write.
Is that Elmo's cousin?
When they're trying to do grant writing to benefit their designated village center, which they have, which is there in East Harvick.
It's not there, it's, isn't it all over?
It is there in East Harvick.
Oh.
It's a designated village center.
I got it, it's a perfect loop, center road, East Harvick, Harvick Street, right by the green bro.
It's a different, I mean, it's a, it's a important thing, it happens with the, with the townhouse for Nekar. We use this, literally show this in order to leverage grant writing.
Totally, I am not, I am one, two hundred percent not against village improvements in Harvick, they have to have.
It would be called something.
But I think it needs to be, I think when we create a new line item, we have to be really thoughtful about how next year's budget, how we're gonna interpret that. What we're actually saving for, because, because if it's just, this happened last year with the recreation fund when there's the act to put their money. Basically the money they didn't spend into a capital.
There's no backplate on it or anything, so.
But we asked them what, what are you going to be spending now? And they told us, we're gonna spend it on ice rink, and that was great, and he said, Ozzy, you have, Eric, you talked about, you talked about this a lot, like capital improvements, you're building towards a capital project.
Right on the black, talking about halfway up the hill on the left.
So if it's just.
It's in the ditch.
If it's sidewalks, then we should put that into sidewalk expenses, have a schedule for East Harvick. If it's, uh, like maybe we just change it from village improvements to like.
Just kinda hide that people and come back and get the car.
Capital, I don't know what those individual capital projects are, that would be different for our overall capital projects.
Me either.
That's just what I'm asking, it's like what, and if there are different ones, that's great, and let's just call it that.
There's, there's, I mean, I guess, there's a stormwater issue in East Harvick.
And there were a couple of guardrails.
There's guardrails.
But again, those are, we are in budget, so I guess, I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out, is like.
Those should just be in the regular.
The guardrails, we can cover under the regular, yeah, no problem.
I think there should, I think there should be a line item, but we need to call it a capital line item that we're saving for. It can't just be like, um, like, and if it's a match, if it's like grant match, like we've talked about this before, then we should have a grant match line item. That's.
Not necessarily, I mean, if we, if our sidewalks, if we were saving money into sidewalk fund and we can use that as a match for a grant.
Well, a grant match line item, that would be too big.
Yeah.
Right, no, I understand, but that's kind of what like this.
Even if it's the, just having your village center.
See what?
See what?
Anyway, we don't have to figure this out, I just wanna bring up in that like, with a new line, with any new line item, I think it's really important that we, that we are really clear about what capital project it's for, and so, because village improvements is almost, maybe it should be a line item, not a capital improvement, because we have like a village beauty line item for Harvick, we could do an East Harvick beauty line item, that's not a capital project. I just think we wanna be careful with like the two, the difference of the two, does that make sense?
Sort of, but not really.
Okay.
I think we should just take that, I feel like we should take that five thousand dollars and whatever it's for, uh, the, sorry, the East Harvick village improvements, five thousand, and whatever that, that, the one below, whatever that.
One below.
Yeah, she's doing it, yeah, if it's for sidewalks, then yeah, bump it.
Well, I guess that's my question, we don't know if it's for sidewalks.
Oh, you're moving it, yeah, okay, sorry.
Yeah.
Right, so it's unclear if it's for sidewalks.
But it needs to be where it needs to be.
So, so all for Harvick.
Casey solved it.
Yep.
Oh, she had this already in and I made her do this, so.
Oh, oh.
So I think that's.
I'm buying lunch tomorrow.
It's okay to do that as long as we have a schedule that shows we're gonna actually fix the sidewalks in East Harvick, right? Like it's not.
Well, that was my plan.
So, but I don't know.
But it's your plan.
But this line item.
She just took it out.
No, I know, but, but that, if that was the point of it, then we also need to say there's gonna be a schedule for this.
Yeah, we should have a schedule for sidewalks.
Okay. So are you sure it's gonna be on there?
I ain't working on it, no, cause it's bad enough, we couldn't get any bids this year.
Oh, you know what happens when they don't get any bids.
Yeah.
I should start pouring sidewalks.
That's right, that's what they did.
I might start a sidewalk pouring business.
Yep, there's a opportunity.
Have you ever worked sidewalks? Cause I have.
We're a firework business.
You're over the hump there on the sidewalk business, you're too old, young man's game.
He's too old already?
Why you should do it, it's just no fun.
Yeah, alright, what do we got, what else we got?
Well, we're talking about unpopular topics. The, it's, the roof of the townhouse needed to be replaced probably ten years ago. We're never gonna get enough of a match for grant writing even with two thousand dollars, so. I would like to see it go at least back to five thousand where it used to be, where it was before it was.
Why is that unpopular?
Because this is the year that. We're getting out of twenty-seven increases.
No, I know, but, but I, we, we own buildings, we need to at least keep a roof on them.
I agree.
And we're, I mean, we're.
So it looks like there's twenty-six thousand in there?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six in there?
Well, thirty-three actually, because they just spent some money, but, so there's thirty-three in there now.
And we have an MOU, so twenty, that is, is part of our MOU for our capital project that we're planning for the accessibility and egress.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Um, so that takes that down a bit.
Yeah.
Um, and that's why the ten is part of that. So I'd just like to see the, the two go back to five.
And then the fifty of ARPA?
It helps us. ARPA funds are not our capital funds, those are federal money, they, they're not in this budget.
And I know, but are those going towards the accessibility project? Okay, and are those, is that accessibility project fully funded or not?
Not yet, but the expe, our expectation is that yes, it will be, we'll be going out to bid for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, in the spring. So it's gonna happen next year. We're more than halfway there. But it, it doesn't help us with what we need to raise going forward for that and other things. To just have to be able to show the town is investing two thousand dollars in a building that needs a roof, that's gonna cost, I don't know what.
All right, so library bond, you're anticipating, yeah, it's.
I'm not reserving anything because we already have thirty thousand sitting in there. And once we make that payment eventually.
That's gonna cover the first payment whenever it happens.
Correct, it's gonna cover that first payment. And then actually, I didn't do it now, but it's actually gonna come out of here and go.
I was just gonna, that was my next question, why do you have it in here?
Yes, and actually, so I mean, I guess I could do it now, because it's actually gonna come out of here, once we get to twen, hopefully, once we get to twenty-five.
But it's nice that we have it sitting there, ready to go, so that we don't have to.
Right, so we've got that first year payment covered.
It's sitting in a capital fund and we've got.
And then once I make that first payment, this subsequent year, it'll come out.
Yeah. So, um, why are we so, oh, so we're. Yeah, seems like Townhouse. Why do we go down so much?
Because we took out last year because, because of COVID, because the, you know, things were, were gonna be tight. And we, we reduced that sort of with the assumption it would go back.
Okay, cuz it looks like it was ten thousand.
Yeah. It was, the request was made to go from five to ten last year, or in our current year.
I'm not sure it's the one, it go back to five, which I think.
Which in previous years, it's been ten thousand and, um. It went down to five thousand in twenty nineteen, the twenty twenty budgets.
Good.
It bounced around.
What else we got in this? Uh, where's, what are we putting in Memorial Building, we're still putting money in there, okay.
It was at ten.
Good, all right.
I did go down on that by, from twenty-five to twenty, um.
And we've talked about this before too, but, um, one of the reasons this is, this capital budget is harder to deal with is because of the others, you can see when you're spending the money.
Yeah, and I, so I'll pull that up. I have been working on that, um, and I do have a lot of it filled in, um.
It gets big, huh?
Yeah, just move on. So really trying, like, I've been working on it and trying to get it filled in, it's quite a project, so as you can imagine, um.
Yeah.
But, you know, the, the stuff in yellow is, is like, um, asset identified for replacement or improvement in five years. So, um, Memorial Building exterior vacant tram.
Yeah.
Didn't put the slate roof repair in there, because there was like a pending grant for that, so it's kind of in process, um. Potentially elevator, um, you know, we put.
Where's that vault door?
Yeah, that's supposed to, yeah, that's, that's something.
The emerg, it was needed urgently.
I had that.
Three years ago.
At least three or four years ago, yeah. Isn't done yet? I thought that happened a year ago.
I was able to get, you know, um, between interviewing some people and looking at furnaces on the back of them. And, and looking at fixed assets, like I, you know, we've filled in a lot of this, but it's still a work in progress, so.
Thank you for.
The fire station roof, for instance, was last done in nineteen ninety-nine, um.
Is that when it collapsed?
Yeah.
No?
So.
No, that was done after, right?
That was after.
They switched from tin, which was designed for tin, then they did three quarter inch plywood, all the way, and then the snow load. Right, that's when it collapsed.
They put three quarters plywood on the trusses?
Yeah.
Who did that?
I don't wanna say.
No, that whole thing was not.
Cuz it wasn't their fault.
No, they didn't do exactly what they were told.
That was, you know, Ronnie, Ronnie back then came up with the idea of standing seam, because the roof always leaked.
Yeah.
And it always ran inside, cuz it just had the narrow tin on it that, you know, once it froze on the end, it backed up and ran inside.
Right.
Well, the board back then thought it was too much money, and so they went the other route, and it still ended up costing more than the standing seam would have been, so.
Kinda like saving money by not elevating it out of the flood.
The whole thing was built, I remember it was, it was built, the old boys tried on the chief.
Yeah.
And we're still paying for it.
Paid for it, and we've actually.
Yeah, all right, so what else do we have in this one? We got Public Works, gravel pit.
We don't need to put anything in the gravel pit reclaimed, because we've got some money and we have about one year left, and so we're not gonna add additional funds.
Then the soil panels will go out and they'll reclaim it all.
That's not our NSHEDs, back up, move out.
All town.
I think we took it out.
We're all one.
We're all one.
The brush cutting line here is gonna go away, because we put that in the regular budget, and I spent that five thousand fifty dollars.
Yeah.
Um.
Bridge.
Not a huge amount of changes. Here, uh, did decrease the road signs and crosswalks from five to two, so that's another, that's a topic that could be discussed. Um, I did make a note down here, we have some accrued interest on this capital fund, in this bottom line right here, about fifteen thousand. Um, and we could talk about, first of all, moving just enough to kind of zero out this bike path, which is essentially in the negative, because this section of Creamery Road that we did under the grant. When it ran over, cuz we had some unexpected, so we had that grant that was eighty-twenty, but that's what made that negative, was some, um, cost overruns for that piece of it.
Take some of that interest, bring that back, get rid of that.
So I'm saying, just bring it to zero, and then decide if we're doing, and then that still leaves ten thousand dollars, so you could, you know, say, let's redistribute that to some other category. Um, and then we start over, we continue to earn interest.
Yeah, I think we give that to the townhouse roof, I like that, Sherry.
I like it.
What about giving to the vault door?
We don't need to do anything, we have enough money to get the door, because not only.
He's just being sarcastic. Door is twenty after eight on a Thursday night.
People are getting tasty.
For the record.
All right, we still have one more category to go over, so.
Let's, can we just, um, just think about that police recruitment line, you know, that was from years ago? Why don't we move that amount of money that's sitting there, sixty-five hundred dollars, into the police budget somewhere and, and.
We cannot really take it out of capital and put it back into the regular.
It had to be capital, because it was the sale of the dog and the, so can we?
You could, you could shift the money out of that category to something else.
Why don't we tell Mike that, to keep in mind that that money is sitting there?
Let's not get, let's not even, let's, that, why does it go to the police department?
Because it had to be capital, because that was the deal with, we sold the dog.
But it's just sitting in this capital account.
Why can't it be used for any employee or something, or any retention?
Just tell them to spend it on some new radios or something, get rid of it, get it out of there.
Hey, Dr. Tom.
So could we, so can we, can we put at least two of it into the fire department to get that back up to ten grand? So it drops to eight this year for fire department equipment and clothing?
Well, I dropped it to eight, because there was thirty-three hundred left over at the end of fiscal year twenty-two. That's why I just dropped it to eight for one year, because that still gives it ten.
I told her, if I knew that much in there, it would've been gone.
That's, that's the only reason I dropped it to eight, because it has thirty-three hundred left over.
Let's make the next sledboard retreat somewhere warm and sunny.
But anyway, I think we could, these are probably discussions we don't need to have this evening, but food for thought. Um, we do have one more category to go over, and I think everybody's starting to get tired.
Yeah, it's not that important of a category.
Um, ooh, sorry.
Wow, it's good I can see that.
A little bit too big. Um, okay, so this is office and payroll, um. Anticipating, um, what we're looking at, so this is similar to highway, like COLA plus one. Um, we did some research, um, with some other towns, of, an example, Morrisville does COLA plus one point six. We are looking at COLA plus one, um, but we obviously, so, and we also have, um, in the current year, um. Uh, the town manager salary was, uh, not budgeted for as much, so that will have to adjust in the next year. Um, and we're also bringing other salaries closer to market, cuz they're significantly below average, according to the salary survey. So the combination of that, um, uh, let's see, retirement shows is going up in social security, which is tied to wages. What else here? Health insurance actually isn't as big of an increase in this category. Just because of the way the plans worked out. Things like postage went up twenty percent, cuz stamps are costing more. Um, advertising, we're finding our paper of record, every time we run an ad, it seems to cost a hundred bucks. So needed to go up in advertising. Um, computer software services, this is a big one, and I actually think I may need to go up more on this, but we have sixty-five hundred dollars to NEMRIC. We have the hundred and sixty dollar a month fee that we pay to COT for our online records room, like the town clerk, the electronic record search. So we pay a monthly maintenance fee for that, a hundred and sixty dollars, so there's that. Then we have like, um, so, uh, when we have our IT person come and visit, service calls. And then the thing that I also didn't figure in here is our email accounts are no longer free. We had to upgrade and we pay for them now per user, so that's another hundred and fifty-ish a month. So I'm probably gonna need to go more like twelve thousand on that. If you add up, cuz this just, just those two, plus the, in it, um, the emails and then service calls, probably should be more like eleven or twelve. So that's a really big increase, but that's why, that's where that comes from. So the NEMRIC is like the flat fee of five thousand dollars, and then we pay, um, uh, disaster recovery fee. And I can't remember what the other, oh, our cloud, we're cloud based, and that's like another five hundred bucks. So that's where the sixty-five hundred comes from. And then, like I said, the COT, service calls from our IT person, and then, um, the email accounts, that's where.
And does that cover, um. Does the IT person do, uh, like, security audits or?
No.
This would just be for services?
Yeah, like if something isn't working.
Who checks that the, that everything is secure?
Nobody.
That's why we were doing the cybersecurity audit thing that we're still been working on.
We have, I have all the, this, um, hardware quoted out to, to, but that's just a buy-in.
This is the ARPA money?
No.
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 This, well, we have, this, this was the seventeen thousand quote, and I'm trying to get other quotes for the hardware, just to get the security in play.
But this is not, you seem to, you got some like twelve or twenty thousand, eighteen thousand dollars for, to put in a cybersecurity system.
No, that was, no, that was denied, it, they said, the board at that time said that we should just pay it out of the regular budget and not out of our.
That was a fine balance.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, um, I had to increase zoning supplies, because again, mostly because of like all the DRB hearings and everything, they all have to post in the newspaper, a hundred bucks a whack. And so to increase that, um, same thing, COLA plus one down here, um, zoning administrator, community development coordinator. So obviously, we went way down, because the person we had was working minimal hours, but now we've filled the role. So we're looking back at like position forty hours, pay period, like a, a, a true part-time. And then social security is just tied to those wages. So overall, uh, let's see. So big jump here, um, and. All right, man.
All right.
What are your questions?
Thank you. My questions are, it looks like we have a, we have an executive session on here too.
No, you don't need to now, you don't need to. It was gonna be like if, um.
The property.
Yeah, if you wanted to like, put it out to bid and, and talk about prices, like.
Oh, good.
You don't need it, so you don't need it.
Oh, we just saved a whole bunch of time.
But we gotta buy some equipment.
You don't need it.
Oh, we gotta, soon as I talk about the equipment, let's move on.
Oh, what's that?
You good with the cat stuff?
Yeah, I don't care then.
Two-wheel, four-wheel, six-wheel, how many P L?
Well, we got four right now.
You got four now, we need four.
Unless you wanna do more attachments to it, but it just costs more. You know, like, like I was saying, if, if, if you wanna do all, we'll drive all the way around.
Right.
And say you wanted to get a roller for it, that would be recommended. But if we're not gonna do a, you know, a thirty-five, forty thousand dollar roller for it, we, you know, we've gotten along ever since I was around and, you know, with just a four, so.
I, I think we, what do you think about the roller?
I know we're crunching for money, so.
I do too.
So I just.
But I also know that doesn't work.
We, one thing I don't know if was discussed last time, but, um, both the excavator, loader, grader, all of that is actually proposed to be purchased fiscal year twenty-four. So the challenge we run up against obviously is the whole lag in equipment and needing to place the order. But then if the budget didn't pass for some reason, like how do we, cuz I said to him, like, if we say, yes, we want this equipment, we're committed to it? Like, where it's like signing a purchase and sales, and we can't just be like, in March, oh, the vote, it didn't get approved, so we can't buy this.
We need to get it approved, and we need the, the equipment, I guess, and.
So it's like, we can't order it now.
But we're doing, I know, but we're doing the same thing with the pit. We're assuming that we're getting the pit.
Yeah.
And we're assuming we're taking the sand budget away from that. So assuming that we don't get the pit, then I'm assuming that we're gonna be over thirty thousand dollar budget on getting some wooden sand.
So I, I would say just to counter argument to like, it's not, like, it's, it's in the budget that hasn't passed. So for the lease payments, that's gonna be true for ten year, every year, we're gonna have committed to a lease payment, where we don't have the budget approved.
Yeah, I think you've got, I think the select board can enter into leases though.
No, but.
Yeah, but do we not, yeah, but we're not guaranteed we're gonna have the money in the budget.
Right, I don't think that's any different the second year than the first year, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So. And, and the excavator is already in the, um, capital.
The money's in the capital.
So the money's there.
Right, the money's already there for the excavator.
And if you, if you consider, it was in the capital improvement schedule last year, and people looked at it and.
So are we, are we deciding now whether we're gonna purchase or not, that's what this.
We have one, we could, thirty days from last time, I think, bring, would allow us to push this decision till our next meeting, and we still be.
Couldn't be close.
It would be close.
Prices make a fuck.
Well, no, prices, well, no.
I don't know, I'm just saying it's an option.
I, I know John Deere, they definitely told me, between the excavator and grader, or excavator and loader, they haven't got a price yet on the grader. Those two equipment alone are going up almost ten thousand dollars at the beginning, beginning of the year. Those two equipment alone are going up almost ten thousand dollars at the beginning, beginning of the year. That's without the grader.
Yeah, yeah, no, I.
So I mean, everybody's gonna have a, have an increase in it, so I'm, I mean, it's, no. I mean, we could wait, but, you know.
I don't see, since we.
I see.
Take a motion, Dan.
So I, I wanna ask Tommy again, does it matter for twenty thousand dollars, like, you know, we're spending six hundred and forty thousand dollars or six hundred and six hundred thousand dollars, whatever. I, for twenty thousand dollars, do you have any John Deere, cat, reason to go with one or the other?
No.
I don't think so.
No. I mean.
So.
Equipment means any of his equipment.
Yeah, I agree, and the service is equal to both of these days. But I wanna be clear on whether we need the all-wheel-drive graders or not.
And where do the parts for John Deere come from and where do the parts from?
Same place.
Same place, yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah, mostly overseas.
Yeah, none of it coming from America, so.
Really?
John Deere, no?
Aren't they both all-wheel drive?
Where do the parts come from?
All over, all over the world, I mean, different to.
Isn't, isn't John Deere?
Hitachi.
That's a.
John Deere's, no, that's, John Deere and Hitachis are the same.
The price of forty.
So.
Caterpillar, some other.
Down here, not just what, three seventy-five minus forty-five.
I have an orange Hitachi, a yellow John Deere, they're the same.
Where's Hitachi made?
So.
Not globally.
Japan.
I know, Japan, doesn't, yeah, Japan.
Yeah, okay.
So.
So both of the.
It depends what you wanna do attachments later.
Well, so the attachment, the grader attachment needs the all-wheel drive.
You're gonna want all-wheel drive with that roller, cause that roller's heavy.
Yeah.
And it's got down pressure to it, so you can actually pack.
Yeah.
But you're gonna want that extra two wheels in the front to help you pull it.
Yeah.
Cause I, I've talked to different towns and they all use it differently. That's why it's almost like, okay, you're asking, you know, for forty thousand dollars extra to do two more.
Do you think we're ready to do that now or do you think we should?
Do they have a lot of statement on their roads?
I, I, I don't know.
Well, there's, it, they work well and it's, I've, I've always said we should roll everything. It's, but it'll be new to the, to, to, to the operation.
Right.
And it's gonna be a lot of money, cause it's gonna be forty thousand dollars more for the all-wheel drive and a forty thousand dollars more for the roller. So we're eighty grand more into this machine all of a sudden.
Right.
And I, I just gotta be honest with you, I don't think this purchase is, it, it's, it's a time to do it. I don't think, I think we should get. You, you did say that the graders you have now are not six-wheel, all-wheel drive.
No, they're not six-wheel, they're only four, so. And that's all we've overhead.
I'll make the motion that we purchase the Caterpillar one-forty grader, nine-thirty loader and three-ten excavator.
Without the all-wheel drive option.
Without the all-wheel drive option, yep.
Okay, um, can I just point something out, like?
Sure.
We, we actually don't have funds for the excavator in the equipment fund right now.
No.
It ended, the balance, that balance ended at fifty-four thousand five seventeen. Um, we have a loader payment and a police cruiser, which has already been purchased, and then we've ordered an F-five-fifty in fiscal year twenty-three, so I don't know exactly when that'll come in, but presumably before June thirtieth, which would leave us with a hundred and two thousand, um, in our current year, and the excavator is a hundred and twenty-five, so like we don't actually have all the funds we need.
Actually, the excavator's a hundred and forty-five.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
We estimated one twenty-five, so, so then, um, yeah, so we don't really have that in the equipment fund.
And what's the difference we're missing?
Uh, well, about forty-three thousand, actually, because, a, and it's all a timing thing, I mean, maybe it won't come in until after July first.
Could we cover it if it came in?
You could, but then it's like on June thirtieth, our capital balance will be in the negative if, if by chance we had to pay for it before June thirtieth. You'd basically be booking your, your capital comment fund in the negative, I mean, we have the money, yes, but.
We have.
We need to know, we need to know what the timing is on delivery.
Well, I mean, if you end up signing a purchase agreement and then locking in these prices, you could say we won't take
Delivery.
delivery until after July first.
Which is fine.
I know, I know the grader, he told me grader's gonna be a year out, easy.
Oh, okay.
Loader, loader is gonna be six months plus. Maybe even up to nine months.
There's gonna be an issue with that.
Excavators gonna be the quickest, which is gonna be about six months, so if you.
So we, but we can't take it until July first.
Right, you could say not.
If that's, as long as we can hold off delivery until July first, then.
I'm absolutely positive, they're not gonna be in a hurry to make us take one any sooner. It's not happening.
So.
I can't imagine.
There's a motion?
In a second, I think.
Wait a second, did we say?
Wait a second, alright, so any other discussion? So we are walking out a little bit onto thin ice and that our budget hasn't passed, but on the other hand, if we don't do this, then we know we're looking at price increases of the first of the years that end up costing the town more. So we might as well put ourselves at a little bit of risk.
Yeah. We're not very risky people.
Yeah. Alright, so, any more discussion on equipment? Hall of favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you. What else we got? Nothing.
Select board reports.
I was gonna skip that. I was gonna skip all that.
I just have, well, go ahead.
Well, I just wanna say that, that as per our retreat, I've been working on developing a set of rules and a schedule of assorted specifications for, um, the cemeteries that the, the select board serves as commissioners for. There's nothing really very solid to show for it now, but it is a work.
There's a lot of work to be done around the cemeteries.
There's a lot of work to be done, it's a lot more complicated than I would ever have imagined. But other people have done it and we can too.
Alright.
The townhouse is closed for the season. I'm gonna get the light on, but Lynn took care of that, and, um, last night we met three hours doing our annual fundraising mailing. Uh, our fundraising list has grown to eleven hundred people, which is a nice thing. We have another three-hour session on Monday to finish it. But, um, yeah, yes, coming along, downtown projects coming along. Everything's rolling along.
Good, awesome. Anybody else for reports? New business?
Okay.
They have storms.
New business, old business?
We have old business.
Um, I just wanna let you know that, um, working on Buffalo Mountain Road.
We're gonna have to rename that.
Why?
Because it's a good Buffalo Mountain street art.
Bringing that up to class three.
Just for a little weight.
Just for a short distance, um, I'm also, I met with Kenny this week and we're finalizing the
Purchase.
purchase and sales agreement.
Great.
So, do they have, do they need to name Gary's Road?
Uh, it's Buffalo Mountain.
No, Buffalo Mountain Trail runs up the.
Right.
But get, the road it goes at.
That's Cooper Brook Drive.
They've already got, that's already.
That's already.
So we're going to.
We're not taking.
Upgrade Cooper Brook Drive to Route fourteen.
Just for that, just for that, the intersection at Cooper Brook Drive.
To fourteen.
To fourteen. It's like three hundred yards, maybe?
And we're just up, upgrading the classification to class four, class three.
Class three and potentially
Okay.
taking that over. I, I think we should do it in the spring.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Cause the timing, um, of it.
Yeah, no, it, there will need to be a little bit of work done.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. And that's.
So were you gonna tell, there was something else you were gonna tell us?
The pit, the purchase and sale.
Oh, right.
I, we've hashed out the details and I'm gonna send it to an attorney.
Great. Awesome.
And it's paved. It's paved.
What's paved?
Fourteen, right to the pit.
Oh, yeah, it is, it's amazing.
Oh, yeah.
When did you do?
I had him take care of that.
Yeah, you guys were clapping.
Alright, any other new business, old business? And we're skipping the executive session because we don't need it. And, uh, let's adjourn, thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Casey.
Good job, Casey.
We can all.
Give me one of these, I have two, sorry, I should've given you a question.
Yeah, that's why.
I didn't take.
One pitch is short.
Yeah, so with the cybersecurity stuff, we don't even have the, the things that.